All right. Good morning, everyone. Today is our regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Today is November 28th. It is 8:34 a.m. In front of you, you have this morning's agenda. I have two edits that I'd like to get approved. The first is to add the approval of an amendment for Passport Labs. We can add that. Who's doing that? Stacy and Tucker. All right, so we could do that. Do we have anything else with Stacy? Is that the only thing with Stacy? Okay, Health and Public. All right, so we'll do it, number seven. Okay, and then the other item is I need to, under the appointments section, I need to remove the Police Commission appointment. Could I get a motion to approve those amendments to the agenda?
So moved.
It's unanimous, and then if I could get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
It's unanimous. Thank you. And then you have in front of you the minutes from our regularly scheduled meeting of November 3rd. Do we have any additions or corrections?
None here.
It's Aldo's in favor of the minute. Can I get a motion to approve the minute?
So moved.
It's unanimous. Public comments. If I, members of the public are welcome to provide comments to the Board of Selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Comments submitted electronically should be sent to the following email address: bosdistribution@newcanonct.gov. Do we have anyone? Nope. Okay, moving on. Marcy, Food Pantry lease. Push, you know what?
Just hold it down.
Yeah, I think you just have to push really like, there you go. I know, it's, you know, we're testing your physical fitness every day here.
Good morning, everyone. It's that time of year. I am asking for approval for the St. Mark's Episcopal Church lease between the church and the food pantry. It also includes two storage rooms for the non-perishables, and it is $1,000 a month.
And that's the same amount we paid last year, correct?
Yep.
Okay, so this is the same thing that approved in the past?
Remind me where the source funds set us, or is it a pass-through from?
That is actually through food pantry donations.
Right, exactly. I think people should realize it's not, we just approve it, but people are donating money for it, which is great.
Great.
Yeah, I mean, it is one of the community's best resources, and it's really, really, it's used.
Beautiful to watch, like, last month, how generous the residents have been to the food pantry, so, yeah.
And thank you to St. Mark for hosting.
Yeah, thanks, everybody.
All right, there are no further questions. If I could get a motion to approve or request from the Human Services Department for the food pantry lease and the amount of $12,000 for a term to expire 12/31/2026 made payable to St. Mark's Church. It's unanimous. Thank you, Marcy. Um, all right, purchase order increase. John?
Good morning.
Morning.
Today, I'm requesting an increase to our purchase order for Amazon by $4,500. We're going to use some other accounts that we already have money budgeted for. To increase it, the total purchase order is exceeding 10,000. That's why we're here to ask for approval. We don't like to come in this quickly after the year. I know. We just had some additional orders from Amazon through, they're becoming a little bit better price-wise and getting us items. So we're using them a little bit more than anticipated, so that's just why we're increasing this purchase order.
So you can buy ammo through ammo, Amazon?
Holsters. We got the new holsters for new duty weapons. They don't sell ammo. No, not yet. I wish.
The code says ammo weapons on there, so I just wanted to make sure.
No, because it's a line item.
That's what the line item is titled as. We can't edit that.
I just, we're just confirming. We could just parenthetically say, holsters.
Okay, all right, that's good to know. So it sounds like we're just using Amazon, and so we'll be reducing other line, another vendor.
Balls and other vendors that don't have the supply that Amazon does. So that's just kind of where we're adjusting things.
Okay. Do we use a lot of drones?
It's just drone equipment. We have two drones that we have equipment for.
Support equipment for them.
Yeah. To purchase to get, you know, just equipment, storage boxes and batteries and those sorts of things.
Okay. All right. Other questions? All right, if I could get a motion to approve or request from the Canadian Police Department to increase purchase order 260066 from Amazon in the amount of $4,500.
So moved.
It's unanimous. Thank you. Amy. Good morning.
Good morning.
So why don't you tell us a little bit about this arrangement with Fairfield U?
Sure. So I am on the Stakeholder Council for Fairfield University for their Public Health Program. It's part of their accreditation process. And one of the things they're looking for is public health internship sites where their public health majors can have an internship to gain some experience in the real world, public health. The Health Department is looking to do that because obviously we've seen a reduce in our workforce since COVID. And so I thought this would be a great opportunity for us to help shape some future, hopefully, local public health government employees. And so that part of this arrangement is to have an agreement with them.
Hi, and I'm assuming I haven't really focused on this.
How many interns at a time do you think you'd be talking about?
We would just do one. Yeah.
And I'm just looking, so, so they're, are they taking on the liability of the students while they're here?
There was a question.
I believe so, yes. And this was reviewed by the town attorney as well.
Because I see they have liability, professional and general liability insurance of a million and per occurrence in 3 million. So I'm assuming that that's, so, and Doug looked at this.
Yes, Doug approved it and made changes, and then Fairfield U signed off on the changes.
So do they get credit for this? Is this an internship?
It's a credit class that they have, yes.
And how much time do you anticipate an intern will spend with you? I just know interns are great, but they do take, they take time.
They do take, and so the intern would be from January until May-ish. It's about, I think it was anywhere from four to 10 hours a week, depending on what they were doing. So not a lot. Some of it can be driven remotely. We would like them to come down because we really want them to experience what local public health looks like. So, and especially environmental health. So we would ask them to be in person. And then we would also have them do some health education and health programming as well.
Yeah, it would be great if they were there. It makes all the difference being on.
Definitely.
So I mean, we have like shadow people as well.
Yes. So if we had soil testing, we would take them out with us so we could show them what a soil testing looks like, how the septic works, what's required, food inspections, you know, the back of a restaurant, sometimes the first time they've ever been in one. So it's always interesting for them to kind of see what we're looking for and what we're looking at.
That's great.
Yeah. Well, thank you for, because I know it's a burden on you. So thank you for, you know, being willing to, you know, shape the next generation.
Yes, it's very important.
So, thank you. All right, so if I have no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve or request from the Health Department to enter into an agreement with Fairfield University to allow for New Canaan Health Department to host students for public health, excuse me, internships.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, Stacy and Tucker.
Good morning. Parking Department is requesting an amendment to the current Passport contract. If you recall, Passport is the company that provides our software program and equipment for enforcement and ticketing and permitting. This amendment will allow us to implement the LPR feature on our handheld devices, which is a license plate reader on the handheld devices. With this feature, we're hoping that we could patrol more efficiently and enforce more efficiently with the pay-by-plate system that we now have in place. The amendment will allow us a month trial period to see if we like it. If we like the feature, then it would be $500 a month to continue with it, with the option to cancel this at any time should we find something else that might work better for us, which I'm looking into.
So how does it work right now? So it's not, there's a handheld device, right?
Right. So right now, it's a handheld device. They,
It's not your iPhone. It's a specific.
It's a specific, it looks like a phone, but it's not. On those devices, they are able to punch-in-plate numbers to see if people paid, to see if people have permits, but it manually has, the plate has to be manually correct. The handheld has a feature that needs to be turned on where they just, like an iPhone, the camera portion, they just pointed at that. They hit a button and it scans the plate, and it pulls up whether they paid, whether it has a permit, it pulls up all that information. So we're looking to see if it works for us, especially for Elm and South. It's getting very time-consuming to punch in every plate number as they walk up and down Elm and South to see who's paid, and who hasn't paid, going into lots, who has a permit, and things like that.
How many readers do we currently have? How many readers do we currently?
So we have two readers, but they're on the vehicles. Okay, the current license plate readers do not provide the enforcement service that we need. Now, I'm also looking into mobile LPRs that will do that. The one thing that both Lisa and Mike say that the handheld might work better is because on Elm and South, if you put them on a mobile vehicle, you're going to be stopping, and you're going to be blocking traffic as if somebody needs to have a ticket issued. Like what they do now, they walk up and down the street. If they have this handheld and they're just scanning it as they're walking, they're not blocking anything. They're not causing any kind of traffic. So we want to give it a try to see if it works. If it doesn't, we're looking into mobile license plate readers that will have this feature, something that I will be presenting in my budget. You know, different costs for different companies. But I think it's a start. Right now, it's very, very time-consuming. They're finding that by the time they get to the one end of the street, they have to go back to the other end because people are parking, and it's just not efficient. When this, probably, it's just a switch, so I would say probably with, I'll give estimate about a week, but probably even sooner than that.
So is this 500 per handheld?
No, it's $500 a month for the feature.
For both of them?
For both of them, yeah. It's, it's just, yeah, it's, it's the service itself.
Yep.
Yeah, not per handheld.
Yes, because I was getting a little nervous about that.
No, 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 it's just for the service, turning it on and, you know, it'll be for any.
What is the notice period for cancellation if we're not happy? I mean, you don't have to give like 15, 30 days. It's like instant.
Cancel handheld, but anytime. I made sure it said it, because I,
You look at the footnote.
Yeah, down on the bottom. One of the things is that this company I'm working with, looking at.
Just never seen any time without notice, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I made sure that they put that because in case we go with their mobile LPR, you know, I want to be able to turn this off at any time.
So the handheld device is new then, right? A new hardware, piece of hardware? Or are they just opening up the software to what we are?
They're just opening up the software, but we are, because we're entitled to it, getting new equipment as well. So I'm hoping with the new equipment and this, it might be, and the new equipment is just an upgrade because.
So we'll have the new equipment regardless. We'll keep that, so this, that's completely independent of this.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it's a.
Also, we met with the first selectman of Darien, who's trying to implement some new parking strategies there, and he's very interested in this and actually wants to come up and see how it works when we get it, so.
Is anybody that's using it now, or any other, any other towns?
I have, I have not, no. I did not, but they offered the trial. So I figured at no cost for a trial.
What do we have to lose?
You know, because it works differently for everyone. You know, somebody might say it's good for them, but it might not work for us if they're giving me a trial.
Yeah, I mean, those scanning tools are so quick. It's amazing, the technology. We use, we use a lot of them at the office. We used to punch in VIN numbers, 17 digits, like, every time.
Now you just, yeah.
Amazing, amazing savings of time.
All right. If there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve an amendment to a current contract with Passport Labs, Inc. to provide a one-month free-of-charge trial with an improved handheld license plate reader.
Just a little question on that. So if you like this and you think it makes sense, do you need to come back for approval from us, or are we approving you?
You know, I, can we, I think I'd like to amend, if you guys are okay with this, to say, you know, and if we're happy with it.
Yeah, I think.
Because I think it doesn't make sense for it to have you come back again.
Yes, but you're practicing.
So if I could, so let me just.
The only other question is, because this comes up with other licensed plate readers, this doesn't store any data. This is just a one-time hit and gone, right? It doesn't keep anything about locations and all that stuff.
I can answer to that exactly, but I believe it works the same as our current license plate reader, which does, will store it for about 30 days. You know, I'm not saying that our current license.
But it's not like a permanent, it doesn't sort for like, you know, six months or something.
Oh, no, no, nope.
Okay, good.
All right, so I'm going to modify this to say if I could get a motion to approve an amendment to a current contract with Passport Labs to provide a one-month free trial with an improved handheld license plate reader. And if the town is happy with the trial, to enter into a contract with them for $500 a month.
So moved.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy and Tucker. Okay, Nick. All right, and Maria.
Good morning.
Morning.
This is a request for the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract.
Something's echoing.
This is a request to enter into contract with ACOM to update our industrial storm water permit discharge. Recent changes were made to the Connecticut DDP general permit for the discharge of storm water associated with industrial activity. The town wants to ensure the current storm water pollution plan or the WPCF is consistent with the general permit that was issued on October 1st, 2025, and becomes effective November 1st, 2025. ACOM will provide services to review the existing prevention plan dated June 1st, 2011, and revised October 2012. Complete and submit a renewal application and create an updated prevention plan to document all updated annual reporting requirements.
So you said November, we're past November 1st, 2025, so can we talk about this?
We actually have until April 1st because we are current permitee holders. So they, it got, it was effective as of November 1st, but current holders have until April 1st to get a updated SWP.
Does anyone have any questions?
And we budgeted for this already. We had 20.
Yes, money's available in the current budget.
Great.
All right.
Thanks, Nick. All right.
If there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve or request from the Department of Public Works Water Pollution Control Facility to enter into a contract with ACOM in the amount of $18,200 in order to update the SWPPP to confirm its compliance with CTDEP regulations. Okay, John and Ryan. Morning.
Good morning. So the fee increases, we went through the Park and Rec Commission last Wednesday, and they requested that we bring the new fees to the Board of Selectmen for approval, as normally we do. And if you're approved by you, then we post them, and then they go into effect after the posting's done. As far as Wavine House for weddings and events, we're actually looking for no changes. We did some research on other comparable venues and think we're in line with the new bride and groom room and everything else, so we don't recommend any changes. And as far as our recreation fees, we made minor changes. Probably the biggest change there is that we added to the senior citizen, we added a veterans pass, where we'll give veterans discount to the regular individual rates. I can go through any changes if you want me to, but.
Yeah, why don't you do, I mean, I see them highlighted on our, on our form, does anybody want us to go through them, or?
Yeah, maybe we should read them into the.
So for a non-resident family pass at the pool, we were going, we request to go up $100 to $1,450. For the nanny pass, going from $140 to $150. Under Kiwanis Park, the family permit going from $30 to $50. And the individual permit to go from $25 to $30. For racket sports, tennis, paddle tennis, and pickleball, we requested to those to go up $20 each for the individual from $140 to $160. And that's mainly so that people will go towards the family pass. If there's a couple, instead of staying separate, they'd go as a family.
Doesn't, do many people, are they multiple racket sport permittees?
Yes.
Or do people pick one?
No. Most, quite a few of them pick all three, but a lot of tennis and paddle together, and then, of course, pickleball is very popular. So we've looked at trying to have racket sports membership, but unfortunately, how the seasons overlap? When do we start it, and when do we finish it? So we'd rather keep it separate like this.
And we have always had the Kiwanis and Wavine Pool separate. Have we ever tried to combine those, where you can?
If you, if you go, if you have a Wavine Pool pass, you can go to, you can go to Kiwanis without charge.
As a person.
Not vice versa.
Well, it's, I mean, I guess from a, from a cost standpoint, it's nice. It's an affordable option, if you want. Yeah, it's good.
How many non-resident family passes do we get for Wavine? I'm just curious.
One of the reasons why we raised that up a little bit is we probably have over 200 requests a year, and we go about 125 to 140.
So you limit how many?
We do limit how many. We do a lottery. And we're actually looking at changing the lottery a little bit. We did, it's basically picking out of the hat, so it's completely random. But if you were a family member from last year, that doesn't mean you can come back. So we're thinking about having first refusal to the existing ones.
That makes sense.
Just, you know, you make friends and everything else, then, oh, we can't go this year, so.
Makes sense, I think.
All right.
And thank you for adding the veterans pass. That's nice.
Yes, that was, that was a request that, not as the last Park and Rec meeting, the one before.
Where do I see that?
Like, if you look down to senior citizens under Wavine Pool, then we just added veterans there.
Oh, there we go, veterans, yep.
We never had anything separating it out, so.
Great.
Yep.
All right. Any other questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve from the Parks and Rec Department, a proposed fee increases. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, Bill. Oh, Bill.
Morning. Hi, you want to sit there? Go ahead. Okay, so we have a few here. We, first one on this here is, we're seeking approval to increase our blanket purchase order with Darian Electric. Basically, that covers multiple different funds, but also streetlights, when they, the lamppost thing ahead, whatever, Darian Electric responds fairly quick for us. Takes care of the little things that just come up. So we're likely to increase that purchase order. And you want to just go through each one, and then?
Well, no, let's, let's talk about each one as we go through.
As you approve?
No, well, just if they have questions about this one, before you go to the next one. Does anybody have any questions about the?
There's got to, there's got to be a reason for a dollar.
It's a funny number.
10,000 in one. 10,000 is, doesn't come to you. 10,001 does come to you. So, but I, I'm, I'm a little, we've already had POs with Darian Electric, so how much have we spent with Darian Electric? The reason I'm asking is we have significant expenses with electric maintenance stuff. And so this, this little amount is, you know, once you get to 50, we have to do an RFP. So I'm.
So where are we?
Where are we with this?
Good question. Exactly, I don't know exactly because.
I know, I feel like I'm signing Darian Electric all the time, so.
Well, because it gets a little confusing because it does cross different accounts or departments. So the way the policy is now, under 4306, that's me. I'll get these approved, but then there's other accounts that, whether it be other than 4306, I use, would be train station, under railroad fund, or some other ones, so.
Right, but I think the policy is if it's by vendor, it's not, it's not like.
Well, that's where it gets a little confusing because.
Well, it shouldn't be confusing. It's in the policy, so it should be how much we're using that vendor. Anne's got to work on something today, so she's, can't be here until later. You know what? I'd like to push these off until we get a better sense of where we are with, at least push off Darian, because I know that one where I'm signing a lot of POs.
So Bill, are you saying that with Darian, it's a, the electric work is under different funds, like the railroad fund?
Yeah, there are different funds involved. You know, for my department, it's just a little tricky because I deal with a lot of different funds, a lot of different capital programs.
But you may have one vendor providing a lot of services.
Right, and Darian Electric is, they know our buildings, which is great, and they're also very responsive to be here when we need them. Last time we went through trying to get other electricians, it probably became a problem, to be honest with you, because it was costing a lot more money because where these companies come in, there's not a whole lot around here. So if you started getting somebody from Stanford down the walk, I was paying for vehicle time, I was paying for, you know, apprentice, because that's, they, they wouldn't come by themselves. There was all these other things came into play also. They wouldn't let me buy supplies and parts, where Darian Electric, we pay direct to supply house, there's no markup. And the other companies say, no, we don't do that. That's where we make our money. But Darian Electric's really just, you know, by the hour thing, they'll come in and do whatever we need to do with the moment's notice, which has been very great.
You know, that's, that's fair. I mean, but an RFP, like, you can take those things into consideration, but I think it's important for us to be able to review, like, is their pricing in line? You know, I mean, once you start to do this and you consistently only go with the same vendor all the time, you know, I think we need to make sure that we're consistently keeping everybody, you know, they're pencil sharp.
You know, and I do watch it, I do watch it because to that point, I understand it. And I also watch, like, you know, I have a good feeling for what you're doing, how much time it should take. And then, you know, there's always things, well, then some contractors in the past, we'd argue about, well, how much time did it really take? How much time are you billing me? There's always that argument, right? So it's, it's always a battle, you know.
I, I'm not doubting their, you know, capabilities and that they're good contractors, and, and they're probably giving up. I just, I think we need to make sure we're.
Yeah, I guess you just need to know the total amount of work we do with this company across all, all accounts.
All accounts, yeah.
Reports, I'll take a time, Molly Mills, something like that.
Yes. Special's 50, and we, we're close. We got to make sure that we're not closer over, so it makes sense to.
Yeah.
All right, that being said, if you could, you two, you guys need to vote on that or anything?
Nope, we're just going to defer it.
Okay, so then we'll move on to the next one, see a firearm for the cold storage project. As you know, we're building those cold storage buildings on the highway, and we want to put a firearm in there, protect our equipment.
Did you send that? I think you sent it to Al, each of the, you emailed the full.
The breakdown. Yeah, I brought, yeah, I sent.
So everybody's seen that. I just want to make sure.
Into a silent launch, and put a system in it for 7852, plus a contingency of $785 for a total request of $8,637. Enders funding is valuable in that project.
Okay, any questions about that one?
I don't think so. I mean, is there, so cold storage, I always pictured things in there that wouldn't have, like you say, equipment.
Vehicles, vehicles, other.
Okay.
Off-season.
Got it, got it, okay, no problem.
All right, goes. So we want to make sure we have a good response time if something ever happened on her.
I didn't, I was picturing less of that type of stuff and more just, you know, I don't know, like a tool shed or something. It's bigger than that.
It's a little bigger.
So Bill, is this the last two line items that we need to approve for the cold storage? I'm, I'm sorry, your, your things.
Yeah, it's true, and there was another. Cheat it. I think there's a, yeah, anything that's pending, so you're right, so the last two, that's it.
So then we should be done with this, this cold storage.
Yeah.
We shouldn't hear from you guys for any other expenses. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I do.
You haven't done the 728.
With electric and the.
Firearm. Oh, that should be in this one, yep, these two. Yep, these two. That should be it. We shouldn't hear, see any more cold storage.
You're deferring electrical ones, I have to rework that one because you guys deferred that, so, but the.
Oh, that's part of the cold, it didn't say cold storage on.
Well, mine too, it says cold storage.
Yeah, on the, on the previous item, I like the second bullet. Cold storage.
Yeah, but so should that number be in here as well? That electrical? The one we deferred has cold storage in it? Correct?
If you look on the agenda, nine, number, item two, call it two.
Right, but then.
No, no, I know, but.
But that doesn't say cold storage on it. But that doesn't say cold storage on it.
So should that be in the summary for cold storage?
In the summary for cold storage, I don't see it. And in here, it just says town buildings, parking lots and streetlights. It doesn't say cold storage building.
I don't know what Joe is doing. All right.
I'm looking at my agenda.
For us, there's three bullets.
Yes, the ten thousand, but it that doesn't say for cold storage building.
No, the next one does. The next one does fifteen to eighteen.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand. You just told me.
But in the next sheet, when you summarize the cost, the cost for cold storage, the one that I keep turning sideways, um, it had, at that point, there were just two pending outstanding items, which are the ones we were just about to approve. But the electrical number, that's the one above, was not included in the summary. So it should be in the summary.
It should be.
It's not. It's not.
So.
Yeah, so we see, we see the sixteen eight one, the fifteen, the fifteen two ninety-eight, two eighty-nine, that is in the second bullet. We see the um, eighty-seven, well, I'm sorry, the seventy-eight.
Fifty-two.
Yep. With the fire alarm.
Those are the two pending.
Right, right. Why does this say eighty-seven? Okay. That doesn't, oh, that's down below, down below. Yeah, so that's now item two and agenda item ten are in the pending for. So the second bullet of what we're looking at right now and item ten on our agenda are in your pending list.
Right.
You just said.
For the total project cost.
For the total project cost. You just said, when Amy asked you directly, are all the costs when we approve these two items? Item two of this approval and item ten on our agenda, are we done with cold storage building? And you said, well, you didn't approve the electrical. And I'm like, everything else on here says it's approved.
No, it's pending.
No, it's pending because you just you just you just went past item nine. That's what our thought is.
Yeah, you know, you'd approve it.
You didn't, item nine, you didn't approve, which was.
Well, the first bullet, we're gonna, we're on a bullet two.
Oh, no, he went, he, I Bill went to item ten.
Okay, we're sorry, I'm I'm like, we're, I said, we were going through each bullet of item nine. Item, the first bullet of item nine, we're not. Okay, sorry. Sorry, yes, we're at the fire alarm, sorry. Um, so let's go back, sorry. Let's go back to the two bullets under nine.
Okay.
Let's, two bullets under not item nine.
Okay, so the blanket purchase order when you're deferring it. So the second one will be the contract.
Yes.
Darian Electric for the electrical wiring and cold storage building for fifteen to eighty-nine plus contingency of fifty thirty.
Yes, that I'm not differing. We can discuss that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the third one uh, on that bullet would be the um, contract for electrical wiring or the fuel tank equipment uh, at the parks garage for eighty-seven eighty plus contingency of eight seventy-eight for a total of nine, six, five, eight.
And.
Yeah, so it is a little confusing because we're asking you to get a summary of total costs to Darian Electric. And some of those costs are within the cold storage building, so.
I I don't see where though, because we've approved everything but the two items that are very specifically outlined, bullet two and both and item ten. Those are the only two outstanding, so there should be no Darian Electric for the cold storage. The I, the first bullet, unless there's an item in here that isn't. I mean, I only see two items that haven't been approved. Silent Watchman for seventy-eight fifty-two, which is item ten that we'll go to next. And Darian Electric, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
So that's fifteen.
Yes.
But that's the second, the contract of fifteen two eighty-nine. So you have fifteen two eighty-nine, which is bulletized, which we're looking to approve, but then another ten. So not taking out the ten shouldn't impact the cold storage building at all.
No, no, the ten is so.
No.
Ten thousand for operating department, operating.
Yeah, yeah. So we're fine. They are fine with this cold storage. But if we do these two bullets, we're fine.
Correct.
Can be complaining about the cold storage building not being done.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that's fine. If, yeah, right, if you will get from.
Sure.
I was doing it too. I look at operating and I look at the capital side. It's always tricky.
Okay.
Yeah.
Said, you have different buckets going. It's.
Exactly. We trust I have a lot of lot of numbers out there.
Right, but that's why we like to do this, because there's just numbers everywhere and I want to see.
So when I want, what I'll do, I have stuff like this, I'll identify it as a capital versus an operating expense. So you guys can differentiate difference, just so you know.
And the summary you said it won October thirtieth is very helpful. I mean, that was, that was nice to see that and breaking it out, so.
So so if we approve.
So in addition, you you're, you don't think you're going to need any of that ten, because that wasn't outlined uh, in this summary of the costs.
Tennis for operating things for like.
That's I, that's, I'm just making sure.
You're part like, my operating, the street light gets hit by a car.
I'm, no, I, I, that's what I thought we were at, but then you said something else. So I just wanted to make sure we were in the same, we were all talking about the same thing.
Bullet two and bullet three.
Correct.
Great, those are both capital projects.
We're good. Yeah, and then, so it's a wrap with the cold storage. All right, so then before we do, so we have to finish item nine before we move to item ten. So um, do you have any other questions about the bottom two bullets of item nine?
No.
Okay, so if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter in the following contract purchase orders with Darian Electric LLC. Um, contract, contract um, electrical wiring of the new cold storage building for fifteen thousand two eighty-nine plus a contingency of fifteen hundred and thirty dollars for a total of sixteen thousand eight nineteen. And contract for electrical wiring of the new fuel tank for eighty-seven eighty plus a contingency of eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars for nine thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars.
So.
Second.
You know, so, yeah, I mean, I mean, look at this. We're at our twenty-five, I know I've spent a lot of POs, just this is, you know, over twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's fair enough. I'll run the reports.
Yeah.
And then we'll see. And I understand, I understand what you're.
No, I know, but it's the same vendor.
I get it.
It's, it's the same vendor, so it should be all in.
Item thirteen as well. So when Joe gets up here, item thirteen is.
Oh, my gosh.
That's why I just want to bring that to your attention.
So it's fifty thousand just for operating?
No, it's a purchase order with any vendor. It doesn't matter if it's capital. I mean, Anne's not here, so it'd be nice, but it's fifty thousand. If we're spending as a town.
Just blew through.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly.
Even if it was, even if it was, say, it was fifty different projects at a thousand, it's still the same.
Right.
Same thing.
Right. It doesn't matter where it's spent. It's a vendor and if you're spending fifty thousand dollars.
And so we we have not done.
Yeah.
A.
RFP for electrical services.
But so we'll get in the next meeting, you'll have a summary of how much um, we already spend with Darian Electric and how much we expect to spend for the year, right?
Yeah, because we've got to figure out how to do some of those things, be honest with you. If we go off an RFP, it's kind of like, you you can exclude people at that point. So I say.
Yeah.
It gets to be challenging. If we go up to fifty thousand and.
Well, this is the con, this is actually a conversation when we had Open Gov about purchasing. So we didn't think we had so many contracts to go out. And this is telling me we have a lot more contracts to go for RFP than what um, we think we do. And maybe it makes more sense to bring in somebody like that.
Well, I have to think about like, if I did an RP, how would I do? Would I, you know, advertise for, you know, it'd have to be a T and M type of thing.
Yeah.
You know, and I've done that before where, you know, on the material side, you know, I ask for a discount on the materials they supply, whether it be five percent, ten percent, what they can offer.
Right.
And we get their hourly rate. And then we try to compare them and uh, I can do something like that again. It gets to be a little tricky. And but it can also open up the door to have multiple contractors.
We did have, we did have a vendor come in that does all of our um, land uh, use stuff with all the permitting. They have a piece of a, an add-on to that software that can help all the departments with RFPs and collecting all the data and and sending it broader and wider. And um, you know, I I got a, an email from one of the the um, the salespeople talking about how uh, a community that, we didn't go with it because we thought it was too expensive at first. But and we wouldn't have enough, we really didn't think we'd have enough RFPs to make it make sense. But I think we weren't looking at all these little, how how often we do this in um, in DPW.
So I guess where it gets complicated is when we're bidding out a capital project, right? And there's components to the capital project, right?
Right.
Um, so is it? At at the beginning of the year, are you able to basically?
Makes a little.
You know, we need the operating, just stuff comes up. But uh, we also know we're going to have the bidding out for these twenty.
That's where it gets complicated. So I'd say, I'd say Darian Electric bid at a job and it was over fifty thousand. And now I can't have him come in to do a two thousand dollar job for me.
But but you've you've, okay, that the flip side of that is you've agreed at the beginning of the year that we're going to go with Derek. This is the conversation we had two years ago and with another um, you and I Tiger had this conversation about something else where you, you go out to bid and Darian Electric says, we're going to give you a time and materials bid for all jobs in the town of New Canaan at X. And they're competing against all the other electrical providers. And now granted, they might not be able to do every project. And you know, then that's a small add-on to the side. That wouldn't go out to RFP that you would have to do kind of what you do now. But um, as a community, we're ensuring that you're getting the best pricing for electrical work that's being done in the in the town. Instead of like all these little one-off projects that you're negotiating, that you, Bill Ossman, are negotiating. Right?
Hmm, is it, yeah, it it's challenging, but we can, I have to think about get language, how I'm going to do this.
Yeah.
Because you know, we cross that.
Yeah, that's a, that's an, an, a, not today conversation, but it's, it's a conversation we should start to have again.
It's just throw it, throw you out a little bit of a whack if you have a prevailing wage job, because now it's a different rate altogether. So I don't know.
It throws.
Prevailing rate job.
If the job's going to be over fifty thousand or a hundred thousand.
That's can be in the RFP, that can be in the RFP. If it's a prevailing wage job, what's your bid per hour? And what's your non-pervailing wage job? Okay.
We could try that. It's hard, it's hard to do if I don't register a project because the rates change of the state.
Um, so so if if, what's the threshold for prevailing wage?
Hundred thousand.
So if if it comes up that, you know, we in fact um, in if we're conglomerating all our potential electrical with one vendor and it for, it could be a hundred and twenty thousand a year.
Right.
Then the bid you're going to get is going to be higher.
No, you could set the, you could set the RFP to say, if we, if we are doing an RFP job, uh, if we're doing a prevailing wage job, what is your bid? And if you're doing a non-pervailing wage job, what is your bid?
Yeah, but my question becomes if the entire um, potential uh, expense of, if you're bundling them together, does that default it into prevailing wage? That your electrical work?
No, it's by project.
Okay.
It's, yes, it's by project.
It's by project.
Yeah, it's by project. It's a bit bit challenge, we'll look into and see if we can uh, try to get our.
At least we can look and see if it makes sense.
Though about, you know, if you set up an hourly rate for a bid like that, it the it's the the vendor decides how long it takes instead of us telling them how long it takes. And that's, that is a slippery slope.
Very much.
Where it was just, and it used to work and I know things are going to change it. But uh, the operating was how we do, we did day stuff, how we would either, if we had a bid, we'd bid or just do it like we do now. And then every capital project was handled on a standalone basis. And we just did it that way, whether it was the same contract vendor or not, we never just differentiate between the vendors. We just said, well, I have these capital projects, this is a good vendor, here we have prices, this guy, this guy. We keeping the operating totally separate, everything. And that's why he's come to the board all the time with all our capital projects, saying, we want these guys, we want these guys. It was full transparency, this is what we're doing, based on the project. Because every project can be specific to something.
Yep.
There's some contracts out there that may get a little bit on a job that I would not want to see work on any of our buildings or that particular building for for.
It's fair. It's fair.
You know, we've learned over time, we learned our lessons, but that one over time. Be be choosy about who you decide wants to work on a building. He may be good in that building, don't put him in that building. It's just, so I don't know if that's something we can have a discussion about.
All right, well, this is a to be continued conversation, but I just want to throw it out there. All right, so we have.
By the way, we want an invitation to the ribbon cutting of the cold storage building, because that's, that sounds like.
Bring in hot chocolate, because it's cold. Bring in hot chocolate.
It's going to be hopefully January-ish.
Okay, so um, we. So Tucker, remind me, so we've, we've approved I, the two items for item nine. Okay, so that's done. So now we're on the fire alarm.
Yeah, fire alarm, which I just said is just silent watchman.
Yeah.
All right, any questions?
No.
If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Silent Watchman in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred fifty-two dollars plus a contingency of seven hundred eighty-five dollars for a project cost of eight thousand six hundred thirty-seven dollars for the installation of a fire alarm in the new cold storage building.
So.
Second.
It's unanimous. Hi, uh, highway and transfer station promotion.
So good morning. The uh, so I'm joined by Cheryl and Lou. Um, so as you know, we had a retirement recently um, at the transfer station. Donnie Smith, our longstanding superintendent um, retired. And then we were able to then go take a look at exactly how the transfer stations run, um, what its needs are for the future, things of that nature. We did go out to uh, um, with an advertisement to see if we could find another suitable superintendent. We interviewed all three individuals that are currently on staff. Um, they were part of it. They all asked to uh, to, um, they all put an application in. And then we met with many others. Yeah, four. We had how many other, we had sizable more number than that.
Twenty-one applicants.
Twenty-one applicants, we met with four. Um, and we couldn't find one that fit the bill, to be quite honest, or what we needed for for the department. And for quite a while prior to that, we had been discussing whether or not we should just not fold the transfer station out of the highway department, but have it overseen by the highway superintendent. Um, keep it as its own separate uh, department, should be its own separate department, it's got its own um, need, meet uh, needs and methods. Um, but there's three men. So it's not like it used to be before where there was twenty guys working there and now we're down to three. Um, and that's kind of a recent change over the past couple of years when we reevaluated, we went from four down to three. Um, at that point in time, we feel that Lou has done a fantastic job as the highway superintendent. We feel that he can bridge the two departments um, with some additional help, meaning an administrative assistant, a part-time administrative assistant to come in and help, not only with the transfer station, possibly with the highway department and and the uh, and the wastewater plant. Just to make sure that all of our POs are straight, all of our invoicing is correct, we're um, and everything of that nature. Because we'll be having a retirement in the highway department as well, our longstanding dispatcher Danny Bukicchio will be retiring sometime in June. So the thought is to um, give some help on the administrative side for invoicing and billing on the transfer station, but have it, the day-to-day operations overseen by by Lou. Um, and we met with each one of the guys, told them exactly what we were planning on doing. Um, they were upset that they didn't, either one of them got hired, but they were happy with the fact that um, they were going to stay their own independent um, division and that they were going to be overseen by Lou. Um, as it is right now, if a guy's out sick or a guy's on vacation, has to be backfilled by either a highway department personnel or by um, by someone from the wastewater plant. And prior to this, when Jimmy Rogers was here, Jimmy Rogers actually oversaw both departments. And prior to this, when Jimmy Rogers was here, Jimmy Rogers actually oversaw both departments. He oversaw the wastewater plant and the transfer station as one. This is going back a number of years. And then we divided them out um right around the time that Jimmy uh retired. And the wastewater became one, transfer station came one, Nick took over the wastewater plant, Donnie took over the transfer station. So now we're kind of melding back again because the number of staff has decreased. And again, it's three men. And their day to day operations. And I think that they do a fantastic job uh in and of themselves. And I think Lou will do a very nice job overseeing the entire operation.
I think you covered it.
Automated, is that why we need less guys there? Is that why?
Yeah, that's, that's one of it. Two, we're seeing a little bit more of a reduction in our, not in our capacity, but in what's coming to the station itself. The, uh, we're all private.
Our tipping fees and everything else are going down.
What the uh, well, the um.
Yeah, I know. I just, it's coming up at the Board of Finance and I'm just like, and I keep saying, they're like, why is it down?
Why we're not hitting our numbers?
Yes, exactly.
And yeah, Ryan brings it up every time. But what happens is it doesn't come in, so it also doesn't go out. So while our revenue was decreasing, our expenses are decreasing as well. And we actually are tipping fee for someone coming in, we're charging them a hundred and fifteen dollars for it to hit our floor. We're being charged a hundred and eleven for it to leave. So we're actually, there's about a delta of four dollars or so a ton that uh we're on to the good. But yeah, that's one of the problems that we're seeing a little bit of volume, the, that whole series of private haulers, they have their own locations where they go, so they can bring their um. Materials elsewhere and then they determine what's in their best interest to grab it from here and bring it to here or grab it from here and bring it someplace else. We only care if it grabs someplace else and brought here. We don't care if it's grabbed here, brought here or grabbed here and gone somewhere else, as long as this is posed up properly. So that's one of the things. Yeah. And we seem to have a nice fit with one scale house operator, one um equipment operator, and then one in the art. That seems to fit very, very well. And when we met with the staff previously, we went from four to three. That's exactly what they said. Was that we really need just three and the, the extra guy was there for, on a rotation for vacation and sick. Vacation and sick, I can backfill from other departments. We're backfilling from highway department, backfilling from the wastewater plant, things like that.
We're also gonna do some changes with recycling. So I think we're gonna bring some good things to the town uh with the help of Lou.
Right, right. Lou's already had some ideas and Cheryl's point, Donnie was our recycling coordinator by mandate, by state mandate. We have to have a recycling coordinator. Spoken to the three individuals down there and we're gonna go back out to them, say which one would like to, you know, put in for the recycling coordinator. Position. We feel that there's a lot of opportunities there to work with other town um entities, not only like say the health department put on a recycling. Venue last year and the schools do it a lot, Planet New Canaan does a lot. We would like the town to be involved in all of that. So that uh, that'll be the next phase as we, as we go forward to try to then help with a little bit more of our recycling site to offer more to the residents. And the more we get out of the waste stream, the less we have to pay.
Great.
That's where we're at.
Okay. So if there are no further questions, if I could get a motion to. A motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works and Human Resources Department for the promotion of Lou Boyce. To a new position of highway and transfer station superintendent.
Someone.
It's unanimous. Congratulations. Lou, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Cheryl.
We are looking for a purchase order increase of sixty thousand. It is not for workers comp. It's for heart and hypertension. So that was posted wrong. Pardon me?
Always a hypertension.
Oh, thank you. And so we had settled a claim a little earlier than we thought. Um, so we went to the Board of Finance, got contingency to move sixty thousand over to this account for the rest of the year.
Any questions? Okay, so if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Human Resources Department to increase a purchase order in the amount of sixty thousand dollars for a one time heart and hypertension payment. It's unanimous.
Perfect. Could I ask to move sixteen up because I've headed into negotiations?
Okay, town clerk update.
So we, as you know, had a hundred and eighty applications. We interviewed eighteen. We brought back eight. Uh, six individuals showed to had uh received other positions. At the end of it, the town clerk decided that um she was not comfortable with any of the candidates and she would like to go back out. So I'm here today with no applicants.
How long have we been on uh, am I gonna say understaffed because it seems like it's operating on less staffing? When, when did we lose staff?
About six months.
Okay, and we're looking for two people. And the total staffing is?
Three. Um, and.
We have one person plus Claudia. Okay. So we've been operating at fifty percent for, I know we had some part time people.
She's had some part time in there. Yes.
So do, so do we just not need that many people? I'm, I'm curious because that's a long time to go with no staffing.
I can't answer that question. She is saying we do, but at the same time, um, we definitely had some very qualified candidates that she chose not to hire.
Right, because it's um both Cheryl and Mimi, along with Adrian in the clerk's office, were part of the interviewing process.
We spent many hours on this.
And uh.
So you went from one eighty to eighteen, then you went to.
Then we picked a top eight. And two already had received jobs um within that time. And so we interviewed six. And we definitely had four that could have easily done the position.
What, what does it cost to do these uh job searches? I mean, I know there's, there's people cost. Yeah.
DP puts it out for us for free, um, but it's the hours that we spend. Um, we probably spent sixteen hours between interviews, applications.
Three inch, five, five inch pile of resumes to go through.
So one of the positions is a straight administrative position, right? Where it's really just get in here, get your feet wet and, and. And get going. It's not a, not a high end, you know, assistant manager or something like that.
Absolutely.
So, I mean, it's, that's a pretty easy position, I would think to, to fill. But I mean, that's.
One of the applicants was from another community's clerk's office. So like.
Do we have internal people who are looking to do this too? I mean, there. We did have one internal applicant.
I, I really like when we can give internal people an opportunity to move up. So.
All right, well. So, so where are we now? So we have to get, start all over again? Or is that the, I mean?
I mean, I said I am not um putting the resources out there at this point. I, I don't have the staff nor the time. Um, so she is supposedly going to follow up with me as to.
My suggestion was to just hire somebody and, but it's not, not, not fair to the people that we bring in because the head of that office isn't gonna, you know.
All right, well.
Yeah, I just get curious if, if, you know, we're always trying to be efficient in our staffing. So I mean, and I have no idea if this lack of staffing has uh means the work's not getting done. I just don't know. It just seems like, it seems like a long time, you know? She's using overtime hours and um from the election account. And so we, the elections are over and I said. If, if you're no longer gonna use election related overtime, if you want more overtime, you need to come back to the Board of Selectment. So. That's all I can do.
Yeah, I mean, this has been months and months and months and the initially, the, the reaction was, hey, the house is burning. We need help. And you know, we brought the fire department to the, to the scene and.
Not literally, as we have fire department members in.
Choosing as an example, but I mean, it's, I, I don't know. It's, it's, we really do need to do something. So hopefully this will.
Underneath the applicant sitting out there waiting to hear something.
Yeah, or I don't know. Do we need to? I mean, if the work's getting done with maybe the staffing's been too high. I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I have no clue. You know, I, I don't know, you know, i- if it's operating with one person and Claudia and they, they getting the work done, maybe we've overstaffed. I don't know. We've invited Claudia to come to every single Board of Selectment meeting, just so everyone knows. She's been invited and does not want to come. Anyway. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Thanks, Joe. Okay, um, let's see. We are moving on to student transportation. Wait, I'm in, sorry. I'm like, all this moving around. Yes, Irwin, sorry, Irwin Barn. Morning.
The Irwin Barn uh buildings workshop, workshop. Uh, there's two items. There's electrical and HVAC. So the electrical workout just, it, it does, it is Darian Electric. So, um, so the work entails uh electrical demolition, a new electrical panel, power to HVAC and plumbing equipment. Emergency and general lighting and general purpose receptacles. So we walked through with um Darian Electric and finalized the scope with them. There wasn't, there's not an architect on this project. So we just went and pointed uh, pointed and uh, you know, came up with the scope together. They're a licensed electrician, so uh I need someone that's in a licensed electrician that will help with the design of this, or we could hire. We could hire an architect. So. So for, so, so requesting.
So Joe, this is for um, since we were taking down the old garage, this is for Butch's workshop as well as uh the, the uh climate controlled. Storage they needed for paper and stuff like that. So like in the one where the apartment used to be, is that what we're talking about?
It's, it's where the apartment used to be. Um, it's, it's an area for Butch who is a um. Who's a, a carpenter, master carpenter, who does a lot of work for, in the town, in the town, the town buildings and does it very efficiently. So we'd like to give him a space in order to, to do that.
Because he used to work out of the other space.
He used to work out of the garage um over at the Irwin House, which is being, which is being demolished.
Okay, and you, so um. I don't know if they had seen this. Um, then we can forward that after you, you sent me, oh, sorry, this is something else. Never mind.
Overall budget.
Looking for in my, in my uh, is it on?
Yeah, you keep going down. Yeah.
So this overall budget. Is six thousand all in? That, that's the cost of whatever updates we're making to the barn to make it more. Functional, since we're losing the space over at. There, Irving. Is this number um within, does this get rolled up into the demo project for the entire Irwin?
Yes.
So the whole.
It's over the overall.
Can I ask a question? Ninety eight hundred for painting? I know, what the heck are they painting for ninety eight hundred dollars?
They're, they, they're painting, they're prepping and painting the whole downstairs of the barn. Cause it's, it was all flaking paint, so it's gonna be used as, you know, uh semi.
Not just Butch's area.
Not just Butch's area.
Alright, because that's a big number.
Up the stairs and also there, there are some storage areas that are, are used um for, for other items. We moved the, some IT equipment. Over there for the camera project. So that, that room is um.
Is that a climate controlled room or no?
Climate controlled.
Doesn't have to be.
Doesn't have to be.
So can you just, from uh, you know, fifty thousand feet, can you talk about the timing on when all of this is gonna be completed? So that Butch can move in there. He'll have a, you know.
Yeah.
Facilities and, you know, his workspace and his climate control is all ready to go. Where's, what's?
So it's an eight to ten week project, which currently, which currently if I get them authorized to, to start, there's a couple more contracts that need to be put in place. Would um.
It's eight to ten weeks?
Yes. There's a lot of nits and nats unfortunately in inspections. So it's um. Into mid-January.
So, but we approved all this stuff. I'm just looking at, we, we approved a bunch of this stuff in August. And so nothing, we haven't done any work. Like we approved uh the painting, we approved the contractor for the shop carpentry.
So we've.
Didn't do any of it yet?
We've done the painting. Um, we've done some of the painting out in the open area and we did the painting on the upstairs that is out of the construction area. And the rest of the painting will be done, well, obviously, once we have drywall up on the walls. The carpentry contract, um, the contract withdrew their proposal, so I'll, I have to find a new carpentry contractor. There was other, other bidders. I wasn't happy with their price or their scope, so I just have to go out and get, uh, get new pricing.
Why did they withdraw?
They said they had too many, they had, they got too busy. And there was also a, a personal issue.
So right now, since, since I know that there was some issues of like storing, we needed like the storage space, climate controls. So now that the buildings are now, where is like the paper and all that stuff being stored? I mean.
It's in the, it's in the, um, it's in the bottom of the barn.
But it, okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, it's not super damp. They have problems with um. Paper if it sits in a very damp area. But if it becomes a problem, we could just move it to any of the barn buildings. We can move it to where it's gonna end up going anyway.
Right. Any other questions?
I think, I mean, like, like every project that we've talked about, having a breakdown of where we are, just like that cold storage barn, it'd be nice to see that, see the.
The pending versus approved.
That's easy enough. See what, you know, because it, we have been working on this, Joe, for a while. And that's the only thing that's like, you know, we're, we're up here saying, let's, let's wrap it up and get going to the next project because it seems like. You know, this has been, we toured it back. I don't know when we walked through.
Oh, way back when. Well, that, that was different. We were trying to get the whole costume.
But that's like, I, my, my expectation, having walked through there, there was workers there and things were happening and, you know. I, if you had asked me where we are here, I would have said, well, they were probably finished or close to being finished and it, we've still got a lot of work to do. So. So just maybe a, a, you know, a summary of where we are and where, where we need to be would be helpful. All right.
Yeah, for the next, for the next meeting, can you take this number and say what's been done, what's been done and, you know?
We can add another column, just to, you know, like go ahead with pending and, and completed or in progress.
Yeah. It's, it's kind of a smaller project than other things. So if we could just get it done so they can use. And I know, I know Butch was out for a while. So maybe that, that reduced the urgency, but he's here and he, he does just so much stuff for us.
Yeah, and I mean, in our defense, like, you know, we, we've had the police department go on and Joe's obviously been a little busy and this is like our own stuff. So this always gets put on the back burner. So you get it, but it's, we need to get it finished.
Put it in front of her.
Yeah. All right.
Okay.
Good.
All right. If I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with Darian Electric. In the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred dollars plus a contingency of nineteen hundred and twenty dollars for a total cost of fourteen thousand seven hundred twenty dollars. Project entails the electrical work at the new workshop in Irwin.
HVAC work for the same, same space. So it's the HVAC equipment that's gonna be repurposed from uh the Irwin Cottage. Duck work and controls um for the new workshop at Irwin.
Any questions?
Repurposed, Joe, meaning we're gonna, we, we're able to use the compressors and things or what?
So there, there's a um, there's a HVAC unit that was recently, within the like the past five years, uh, used over at the cottage. So it's an oversized unit, so we'll be able to condition the space that um, that is gonna be the shop. And we'll be able to spill some air into the, the general area, um, just to kind of temper it so that we can have the humidity at the right levels.
Okay.
All right. If there's no further questions, if I could get a motion to approve a request from the Department of Public Works to enter into a contract with MA Guaramala Co Inc. In the amount of thirteen thousand two hundred dollars plus a contingency of thirteen hundred twenty dollars for a total cost of fourteen hundred, five hundred twenty dollars. The project entails the installation of HVAC equipment in the new workshop in Irwin.
Someone.
Second. All right, Tiger. Public Works.
We'll give you a, we'll give you a quick rundown. So um, work is ongoing on the staircase in the back. Ran into a slight little play yesterday. Concrete was supposed to show up at eight o'clock, showed up at noon, didn't have an additive to it. The guys worked until about eight o'clock last night to try to get it to work to set. So we weren't able to get the dumpsters into it only because it's uh, was too green. But that's a, it's a issue with the contractor and the, the supplier itself. So now they're working on the, excuse me, the sidewalk coming in. So they've already poured the rat slab in between, which is where we'll have in the middle of the sidewalk from the staircase or ramp all the way out to Elm Street, we're gonna have a brick band. So one brick set a, set of a um, basically twenty four inches wide or so. A brick to try to tie in basically the, the walkway, kind of a yellow brick road. So that rat slab has already been poured, um, so then we could set the brick and then they're gonna be.
Regular slab. We're near restaurants, so no rats.
No rats, no, sorry. So it's just a, yeah, just a pre slab and an under, and a, you know, an underslab of the bricks itself. Thank you. So that'll support the bricks themselves and then they'll be pouring one side and the other. They're working right now on the excavation of the staircase and the ramp itself. They'll be working on the staircase first to tie the staircase in and then um, the sidewalk. And then they'll be working on the ramp. So the goal is to have the area tied in. So from Elm Street up the staircase and into the parking lot and the parking lot cleaned up. Before Thanksgiving and then they'll work on the ramp and have the ramp done a couple of weeks thereafter. So, but the thought is that anyone parking in the Park Street lot or the Playhouse lot can walk down the stairs like they used to last year. And then walk down the sidewalk, get to Elm Street, do their shopping, do their uh dining, what have you, and then be able to come back out and access the, the locations. And the compactor itself that we had there forever is gone. Hydraulics are gone. Just working on now getting the mafia blocks out of the way and then the dumpsters will be placed inside.
Mafia blocks. I'm loving all these new terms.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, but yeah, the big concrete blocks that were protecting the compactor, those will be moved to, moved over to actually protect the area. So no one will walk down into this, into the, into the location. Or down into where the stairs are um over the next couple of weeks. So they're working out, they're working there every day, working diligently. So we'll keep on them to make sure that we get, uh, and I spoke to the contractor right before this to make sure that we have the staircase. We have access from Elm Street to the lots for the shopping season, for, for Thanksgiving and beyond.
There's no, so we're getting close, right? So what, what are the odds that we're gonna be able to get this going by? Do you have a date in mind that you think?
Date in mind? No, I don't have a date set yet that we're gonna finish, finish? No, I don't have that.
You'd almost say, you know, for the sake of business, you'd wanna concentrate on making sure pedestrians can safely go through there and the decorative side of it can always.
That's exactly what we're doing. We're, we're doing exactly that. We're trying to get the, we're trying to get the pedestrians in from Elm Street to the, to the lots or back safely. That's why we're saying we're focusing on the sidewalk and the stairs because that's exactly what we had before. We didn't have the ramps before and then we'll work on the ramps um after that and get the ramps tied in. And then beautify the area um with the brick and what have you. And then the, the idea is that come first contract in the spring will be to repave that lower lot. We're gonna run out of time and it's gonna get way too close um for paving in that regard. And then also it's too disruptive, to be quite honest, because I'd have to close the lot for up to three days, one lot, four days for another lot. Too disruptive for, for everything. So the thought is that come springtime, first project out of the box is to pay both lots, but in succession. So we pay one lot, have to transfer the parking over to the one and then part, pay the other lot, transfer the parking back. And we can work on a schedule to try to even do portions of the lot.
Get the skim come over what's dirt. Get the skim come over what's dirt there now?
They'll be, yes, it'll be safe, when it's, when, when we're all done for the season, it'll, they'll be, it'll, it'll be safe pedestrian wise, there won't be any gravel. They won't be walking over gravel, they'll be walking over asphalt or, or a, a more suitable surface, say brick or concrete at that point. Um, as far as everything else, we started the work on Pine Street. So the contractor's down there now working on the granite curbing and the brick, the goal is to get all the granite curbing in um, before the season. Before the paving season closes and have the road paved before the season closes and then we can backfill the brick. And the idea is to just do one um, establishment at a time, so in front of one parcel at a time to do that work. That way we're only disrupting one area and if we get snow, we have a problem, well then we can close down just the one area and not everyone is disturbed. We don't have the entire road, road torn up. And then if over at Waveney, the lot is complete, we're waiting for um, the guide rail or I'll say the wood railing to go in. We've got six of the, of the ten lights in, we're waiting for the other four lights to be um, brought to us. And then safety markings is coming in on Friday to mark out the lot, striping and then we'll be striping Sunday night. So we're either thinking, I'm talking to John now as to whether or not to open the lot in the interim without striping, just to allow people to come in and out. Friday, close the lot, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, stripe it and then Monday, open it back up again and be done. But uh, I don't know if you've seen it, but it looks, you know, it's now it's fitting for the, the house itself.
Is that sidewalk, um, when I was there, it was just all gravel.
It's all, that's the way, that's, yeah, it was that, that's the Waveney mix up until the Blue Stone. Yeah, so we'll, we'll get them to hammer it down a little bit more um, in place, but that's, that was the thought to not have an additional material. Because at that point, we were looking at, say, concrete, so then we had Blue Stone Concrete Trail Mix, we were trying to stay away from too many materials in one spot. So that, and I, but I think now it's a fitting location or a fitting area. And the only other thing we have is that the, the DOT plans on just paving a small portion of the Merritt Parkway because of water main break on the twenty-third of November. Um, that's an overnight, shouldn't affect anybody, this, you know, some travelers, but uh, if, and the rain dates on the twenty-fourth. That's a, and then that, that'll pretty much close out the season. Joe mentioned what was happening at Irwin, the scaffolding's down at Waveney, they're just on cleanup now. We'll come back in the spring with a secondary phase, once we see what's, what's going on.
And in the interim, you'll put the elevator in.
The elevator in, right, the, the glass is being ordered, everything is working, we've already gotten some of the materials delivered. So uh, they're not here, but they're in a, they're in a storage facility with the contractor, so they're in the state instead of being in California. And uh, the rest of the materials will continue to come here and then I'll be looking at January one, starting to put the elevator in, be done.
And, and we, the Waveney is going to be kind of closed down for use for.
Yeah, for about the three months, depending, you know, if there's, if there's events that John can put on at the time in between with the contractor working. Then we'll do so, if not, we'll just have it closed, but that'll be, that'll be John's discretion, working with the contractor if we can. We did that last time, we opened up certain areas at certain times, just to allow people in.
Because it's just the one section.
Yeah, with the, yeah, and if we can, if we can work with the contractor on, you know, non-areas of disturbance and people are okay with having a small construction area. Then, then they can come in and uh, enjoy the facility. I think that uh.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, Ian.
We move the appointments up after this, so we've got a lot of people who need to get going and that should go fast. And then Patricia, sorry, you guys heard it from the long haul, I warned you, I told you you were going to be at the very end, so. Um, good morning, thank you for having us. Um, if you remember back in July, um, this item was on, there were three purchase order requests on your agenda, which you deferred. Two had to do with private school health and welfare, which was the nursing programs and one was the student transportation piece. Um, Sean and the Board of Ed will come back on the nurse piece at a later date. But we do now need to get this approval for the student transportation. I prepared a memo for you explaining, you know, with the, with the state statute uh, that we are required to provide transportation. For new Canaan students enrolled in the private school. And the process for which to, to come up with a number is that we request a student list with their addresses for those, those students that live in New Canaan. Um, I get the um, per pupil cost from the Board of Ed on the busing, per the busing contract. And then um, when we get that final number from the country school. We basically, and you'll see there's a spreadsheet that I have copies if you need it, but um, that takes us back to nineteen ninety-six showing. Um, what the reimbursement rate is, this year the per pupil cost is one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. And um, we've agreed with the uh, country school that the reimbursement rate would be fourteen hundred dollars per student. It can be up to almost double per state statute, but it's an agreed upon amount based on um, what the country school submits to us. And I will note that the budgeted uh, amount for this was originally two hundred and eighty thousand, but they had a significantly higher enrollment than we uh, have had in the past. And they're, well, eighteen students, so the request this year is for the three hundred and five thousand two hundred dollars. Um, it gets paid out mid-year, so uh, around now and then they get it, so it's split in half and then they get paid again in May.
Um, so they pay more than, the country school pays more than the three oh five two hundred, so that's why.
Right.
Going to go, um, in December, we're putting the difference in the budget of twenty, thirty thousand dollars. Um, in front of the Board of Finance for coverage on that one.
Yeah, your approval is contingent on the transfer.
Transfer.
Twenty-five thousand two hundred dollars more than budget, right?
So we'll get a contingency approval from them.
Okay.
But it just is.
Yep. Okay, so if I could get a motion to approve a FY twenty-six purchase order in the amount of three hundred five thousand two hundred dollars payable to New Canaan Country School. For the state mandated re- reimbursement of New Canaan children. Student transportation.
Student transportation.
Um, who are enrolled at New Canaan Country School. This approval is contingent on final transfer approval by the Board of Finance.
So.
It's unanimous, great.
Thank you.
Okay, appointments, alright, so um, we have a lot of, um, I think next board meeting will have more of this as well. But um, it's that time of year, um, we have uh, two fire commission uh, appointments. We have the two potential appoint, why don't you come, come on up, Mike and Sven.
Morning, it's good to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Thanks for waiting.
Yeah. Mike wasn't waiting that long, he made a grand entrance. So. So I um, so Sven would be um, taking on uh, the position uh, that has expired for Beth Jones. And um, Mike Sochi, I've just learned how to, how to say your name, everybody says it differently, I heard you say it and I'm like, okay. Very sensitive of that, um, the. I can't imagine why, I can't imagine why.
You know, it, it cringes, I cringe for you when people get it wrong, you've been around a long enough, people should know your name.
Has been stated for a long, long time.
That's what I called you.
When I got married.
Heard you say it in the message.
I, and then my.
I heard it, I, I take it to heart, I make an effort to pronounce people's names correctly, so. Um, so Mike would be taking on the uh, uh, position from Jack uh, Horner. And before we um, you know, thank you both for agreeing to step in to the both positions. I think you're uh, great, will be great additions to the Fire Commission, uh, they'll be joining Bob Fields. And um, I also would be remiss if I didn't thank both Beth Jones and Jack Horner. For their many years of dedicated service to the Fire Commission, I mean, we're very fortunate in this community to have those two volunteers. And we're extremely fortunate to have um, the two of you being willing to step up, uh, both of you have a lot of Fire Commission experience.
Thank you, it's, you know, it's a, it's an honor and a privilege to take up this duty again for me.
First for me.
That's right, you just retired, he was an active duty firefighter for.
It's glad, I'm staying involved in the service, which is important to me.
How many?
Uh, you know, with a guy I've known through the fire service for, well, just a couple of decades.
I was going to ask, how many years between both of you, and if you added the years up?
I joined in, uh, joined in February seventy-eight.
You got forty years. Ninety-five years.
Yeah. I mean, talk, talk about a strong bench, I mean, we are so lucky that we have, you know. A, you guys are, you guys are sort of the born. You're, you're, you're New Canaan, you're a lifer, so I mean, it's, it's really amazing to see us transition into a couple of experienced guys. Who know this in and out, our community is very fortunate to uh, to be able to have both of you guys step up and do this, so.
Thanks for your kind words, Steve.
Yeah.
I mean, for those who are maybe watching at home or on replay, uh, what you don't see in the video is that we have a number of members. We have the Assistant Chief, the Fire Marshal, um, the uh, Volunteer Fire Chief. And a number of members of the Fire, Fire Commission here supporting this, so thank you all for being here. Um, you know, it says a lot about what you do for this community and the support that you give uh, this town, so. Um, thank you all for being here and uh.
Yeah, I just think people have to realize that, you know, we have, the way government works, right? We have people who are hired to do the jobs and then we ask volunteers to oversee many aspects of it. And it's really hard necessarily to get a group of volunteers who have experience in the life now to be able to take that on. And, and these two guys, we're like beyond lucky in terms of, you know, understanding what the, the personnel needs, understand the managerial aspect of it. It's, we're just really fortunate.
And it would take, it would take a late person ten years just to learn the acronyms and the, and the language.
Needs and wants and, and requirements and you guys have it, so it's great, thank you.
Okay, so with that, um, if I could get a motion to approve the appointment of Sven England. As a regular member for a three-year term ending twelve one, twenty twenty-seven. And Mike Sochi as a regular member for a three-year term ending twelve one twenty-eight. And just so everybody knows, this is related to when their predecessors' terms were expiring. So that's why the difference in the dates and we can, so you know that Sven, we know that, but maybe the members of the public don't know that, so.
I will enthusiastically move that.
I second enthusiastically, a lot of enthusiasm, guys.
And it's unanimous enthusiastically, so thank you guys. Alright, um, and then, do we have anyone online? Okay, great. Hey Tracy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Who's Tracy Hamel?
I tried to.
She's new to town or something like that, yeah.
We, you know, in addition, and I'll comment later on, uh, Jim, Tom Ferguson, uh, who has so ably. Um, served on the Health and Human Services Commission for, I don't even know how many years, but a very long time. Um, gave us notice that he was interested in stepping down and um, you know, when we were looking for somebody. Uh, Tracy's name came up from multiple, from multiple places. And um, I, you know, going way back to our math mom days, have known Tracy for twenty-some years. Yeah, everything, so, and I know you know her through your kids, um, and she is a member of our CERT Commission. Um, she's just been super involved in health in this community and I think she'll be. I mean, she does a great job with whatever she tackles, she was on the Waveney Board for years, so there's so many points of intersection with her past experience. And what the Commission does, I think she'll be a great, a great contributor to that board.
Tracy, what makes you want to do another thing?
That's a really good question, Steve. Um, actually, I mean, first of all, I'm very honored um, to be asked to be on this board, I mean, huge shoes to fill with Tom stepping down. Um, I've known Tom and I've known Barb and a couple of others on the board through um, my past time at the Waveney Life Care. Network Board for six years, I train as an EMT and then now I'm one of the co-directors of CERT. So there's a lot of overlap to what I'm already involved with and have been involved in. Um, so um, that has spiked my interest, but on a very personal note. A, uh, my, our son's best friend um, committed suicide in August. And um, I made a promise to myself that the next volunteer position I took would have some type of tangential connection with mental health. And so when I was asked about this commission, um, it just seemed that everything was aligned.
That's great. Well, New Canaan owes you, first of all, all the things that you've contributed already, but thank you so much for stepping up again, Tracy. I can't think of a better person to assume this role, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Trace.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aimee.
So with that, if I could get a motion to approve the appointment of Tracy Hamel for a three-year term ending twelve one, twenty twenty-eight.
Once again enthusiastically.
I like that enthusiastically.
Very. It's unanimous, alright, thanks Tracy.
Thank you very much.
Alright, and then uh, Board of Finance, these are just um, reappointments of uh, two board members whose terms are expiring. Uh, Todd Labiary uh, and James Yao, uh, both of these will have to go before the Town Council. Before uh, they are fully approved, so.
Perfect.
Um, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Todd Labiary and James Yao as regular members for a four-year term ending eleven fifteen, twenty twenty-nine? Subject to confirmation by the Town Council.
So.
Second.
It's unanimous.
And you know.
Enthusiastically.
Well, and we can't pass these guys without saying how much time they put in, I mean, it's, you know, Todd has been the chairman for, you know, in recent memory. And just runs the, the perfect meetings, and I know Amy, you've been at many of those meetings, so it's very efficient, so, he's done a great job.
They're both good, both good.
Okay.
Could just point out that the appointment of George Bennington, Tim Kimpel, Doug Murphy and Jeff Platt is a term ending two thousand twenty-eight.
Oh, okay. The other ones are twenty-seven, okay, so, and then we have, sorry, we have one more, there was a big space and I missed it, the big space.
Sometimes it goes on the legal paper.
No worries, um, if I, uh, so we need again, there's a bunch of people whose terms are expiring. And uh, they, uh, George Bennington um, reached out to all the members of the committee to see if they wanted to continue and they do. So uh, if I could get a motion to appoint Gene Goodman and Susan Leoni for three-year terms. Ending twelve one, twenty twenty-seven and George Bennington, Tim Kimpel, Doug Murphy and Jeff Platt. For three-year terms ending twelve one, twenty twenty-eight.
So.
Second.
It's unanimous, alright, now we're ready for you.
Okay, nature center, going back. Good morning.
Um, hopefully you had a chance to read the memo, prepare, pretty much everything I'm going to say was, is in that memo. Um, I have copies here if you need it, but uh, that lays out everything, I've got a few pictures to go along with it, but that's pretty much all the information. A lot of this, as we started about three years ago, was me sort of giving the annual update and also prepping for when budget things come up in the spring. You say, oh yeah, Bill blabbed about that in the fall.
It's great to get it off cycle, you know, these things.
What I was told, so happy to be here at a time when it's not, at, at the tail end of a three-hour meeting, it's only the tail end of like an hour. An hour and a half long meeting, uh, so I'll go through my slides, uh, please stop me for any uh, questions as I move along. Um, but I'll try to keep this within that ten minutes that you all uh, allotted me, so. I always start with this page, you've seen it before, I do it every year. Um, why, our, our public-private partnership started in nineteen sixty when the property was gifted by Susan Dwight Bliss. And that deed was restricted for that property to be used as a nature center, arboretum, bird sanctuary, passive recreation, related purposes or a museum site. And within that first year, town and six private citizens uh, got together. The six private citizens formed the New Canaan Nature Center Association Incorporated, which what I am the executive director of. And we have a letter of agreement that uh, we fulfill the deed uh, in partnership with the town. I always say that to remind people, because every year I talk to people and people do not understand that, so I'm, I'm continuing my mission to hammer that home. If you're curious, the nineteen sixty letter was about one pager, it got upgraded to two and a half pages. That is the agreement where uh, we've been going off since then.
To those days of two-page legal agreements.
Would love that.
Um, and so any of the conversation around with budget season is who pays for what? And that's really what we're partnering on is what is town's responsibility, what's our responsibility? And then in recent years, we've come together pretty well on that, so thank you for that. Just our biggest programs, I put Romeo in there, Amy's favorite tortoise, most charming turtle around. You gotta go, check out Romeo, he'll, he crawls up on your foot and he makes this chirping noise, he's a lap tortoise, he's great. Um, so our preschool's our biggest program, um, a lot of times we're asked how many New Canaan residents? And we're up around eighty-five percent, sometimes it's eighty, sometimes it's ninety, but mostly New Canaan families. Same thing with summer camp, a lot of campers go through, um, you know, the last, last summer was seven hundred and eleven. Ninety percent of them are New Canons. You know, the last, last summer was 711. 90% of them are New Canons, so it's a lot of that. Then our environmental education and community events, little bit more outreach. We bring in towns around us to come to things like Fall Fair and our Winter Wonderland. We get a mix. And then our environmental education programs go all over. Whoever, you know, we go up to Danbury, we go down to New York City. So that's a lot of spreading our mission outside of New Canaan.
So Bill, just if I could stop you there, with the, with the preschool, given sort of the, you know, the, the need in this community, sort of, what is the, who are you bringing in that's taking New Canaan, you know, the rest of the 15%? Just given sort of that we're super tight here right now in preschool.
There's, like, from which towns? I mean, we have people from Wilton. We have.
Yeah, I mean, like, what, how do we decide that we're going to not give those slots to New Canaan families? Because I know you turn people, there are kids, people that don't get in. So like, what is the thought process for taking in a Wilton family versus a New Canaan family?
I don't think we've ever put it that way. Certainly for us, we're not, we're not looking at it like that. So we get, the first, the first application process is all the returning families.
Okay.
Younger siblings, they all have that locked in. Our Little Explorers program gets a little, that's the Old Mommy and Me program. So that's the caregiver and child. So they have an opportunity after those returning families before the general public. And then it's the general public. So maybe we have, I'm throwing out a number here, maybe we have 25% to 50 of the spots left, somewhere in that range. And then it's an open enrollment process.
It's just first come, first served.
Yeah, but that also has to do with the dynamics of the classroom. There's a lot more that goes into it. But, you know, it's, we don't exclude a family from Wilton to save it for New Canaan in that respect.
But I guess my, because I had somebody reach out to me and I, you know, that's not my business, like it's your business. But, so, I guess, is it a lottery? Or is it, like, how, how do you fill the remaining spots? Because I, I do know that certain families don't get in from New Canaan to your program that have requested to be in. So I'm just, I just want to be perfectly clear with, you know, families, because it is very tight here and, you know, and it's a taxpayer-supported entity. So I just want to understand.
If there was ever, and that's a conversation that we'd be happy to, I would have to have it with our preschool director also. But if that is something that the town wants to implement or put on to us, then let's please have that conversation. So far, as it works out, it's mostly, as you see, 86% New Canaan. And we don't have a policy that reserves those spots. I mean, my, I guess, the flip side of that is that we have projects coming up that we're hoping to be able to accommodate a few more families, as we're going to talk about here. And the need is great, and we want to accommodate as many as we can. The fact that we have to turn away families indicates that people really like our program. They're running a good program. So that, it's a, for us, it's a good problem to have, but certainly being that we're a partner of New Canaan, the town of New Canaan. If that is a conversation that y'all want to have, then let's have it.
It seems like a simple fix. I mean, you'd open it up to your returning families and then you'd open it up to New Canaan families. And then after that, you'd open it up to, because of what, broader community. But that's just the way I would do it. Because, you know, I, I would think that's the way you would do it anyway, but.
There, there are years where if, certainly if we didn't allow it, just open enrollment, that we wouldn't fill our spots. And so then we're in a budget deficit. So that, that's just the balance of that.
You're saying that you're not oversubscribed every year is what, basically.
We, we turn, and it has to do with age groups too. So some of these numbers are skewed. So maybe there's three Wilton families in a classroom that has two spots available. And then there's another classroom that's completely full. And that's just the one that didn't have any spots. So it, it's a moving target every year.
No, I, I understand the difficulty. And you have returning families. So if you have a Wilton family that was here and they have another sibling, you're going to give that priority to that sibling that wasn't in that.
Right.
So, yeah, I just like to understand it a little better. And, you know, I think we should, we should, given where we are as a community with the young families, we're in a, you know, we, it goes ebbs and flows. When my children were in, it was super tight. And then after they got through it, like there were openings everywhere. So it does ebb and flow. It's just, you know, we're definitely in a heavy flow area.
Again, the fact for us that, that we have that issue, because so many people want to attend the Nature Center, because it is a unique program, at least for, something I'm hearing is, is a positive, not for those families. Right. But duly noted. And like I always say, we're here for conversation. So if that is something the town feels strongly about, let's, let's have that conversation. Because we're enrolling, like, our applications went out for the returning families. The next batch goes out first week of December. So now is a very good time to have that conversation. Revenues pretty much stay, stay same in the buckets. The big one is that preschool that we just talked about. Programmatically, we're about 70%, 30%. It varies year by year, but 70% program, 30% fundraising or annual appeal. You'll see, you know, there's a variety of those little buckets, but the big ones are luncheon, which makes up the big portion of that fundraising. And then the annual appeal that we're sending out currently, like most nonprofits. And then we have smaller grants and things that come in. So that's the breakdown. We, as you can see with the expenses, we do spend a little bit less than we make. And then that other money goes into improvements around the property. So the expenses, mostly, this is mostly staffing. I was just talking, the young, I had, we had the young philanthropists at the Nature Center. They asked me that question. What do you spend the most money on? I said, with most nonprofits, it's, it's staffing. So that big 48% general administration, that's me. That's the CFO. That's, that's our grounds and facilities director. That's our registrar.
Not any nursery school teachers.
Uh, no, that's in the, that's in the preschool. Yeah. So we make a little bit more than we spend. The finance committee decides what to do with that. Usually it's funding projects that we sort of have on the back burner that we can fund at the year end, because we are going to come out a little bit ahead. The other portion that we've been putting into is our capital improvement fund, which is helping with the projects laid out in the memo, that, that's why we have funds that we are able to spend on our new proposed greenhouse and things like that. Just in the last year, some of the town projects that were completed, the Quanis Pond Dredge is almost complete. Just yesterday, I was up there and they were spreading out the silt. They were waiting for it to dry out, which then it kept raining. So I said, well, what are we waiting for? So they spread it out and that's in the upper field by the first Presbyterian parking lot. So they just spread out. That's where they put all the silt. Down below where the pond dredge is, there's still some plantings to be done around it. The dredge looks great. We're very happy with it. I think town is very happy with it as well. That's a picture on the bottom there of the new dredge. There's a nice patio there with, we're going to put benches and tables and things. And yeah, we're very, very happy. Behind that picture in the field was a field of fragmites, which is a very invasive grass. As part of this, we said, is there any way to get that out? And because they had a long enough boom, they were able to scoop it out and get wetlands approval to do that. So we were able to remove a huge patch of invasives as part of that project, which was, we were very happy about. The only other options.
For like, because I, it is my understanding and I'm, I'm not an expert in this. So.
Sure.
Just from listening, it, it, it strikes me that you've done it this year, but you're going to have a few years of coming back for it? Or is this one of those that you want to die?
Oh, no, of course not. But town, at least, and this is a great, you know, as part of this project, scoop it all out. Now it's our responsibility to, to maintain it. So there's still fragmites sprouts and we go and yank them. And what they thought they did was got rid of all the roots, which is what they can sprout up the new plants. There's going to be some that pop up. We're going to have a wetland mix, the native wetland mix that goes in there. And then it's going to be our management issue moving forward. But we're very dedicated to keeping that down. The education building and herb cottage assessments were both done. The herb cottage is the one up by the old community gardens that got removed because of the lead issue. That building, we want, we need to make sure is in good standing before we wanted to put a new greenhouse next to it. That would have changed our plan. So town commissioned that. We got an assessment for the building. There's about $100,000 worth of, I think, and this is where the public works budget, this will be Tiger's item that we're asking to put in. The, about 30 of it is like rotten wood and painting. So that's like the bear, the first step of the bare bones that we want to get taken care of. And that will be our request that hopefully is made in the spring. The education building is where we want to redo all the classrooms and I'll show some pictures in a minute. That's where we want to divide up into four new distinct classrooms. There's only one classroom now and the other side's used for the Little Explorers program. This will set up our programs for the foreseeable future. So we're very excited about this. There's a building code issue with the bathrooms. That's what we're asking town to partner with us. Last year was funds approved to get that started. Also plan the ADA ramp and pay for that, which is hopefully going in soon. And then we have a great plan that if we snapped our fingers and it just was done, we would all love. But there's an issue of how long that project's going to take, whether we have to close down our classrooms, which is our moneymaker, and how to stage that. So we've been meeting with Bill Ossman and Tiger. And I think Rothbart's on, I saw him zoom in and Rose, and Rose is here. So they, thank you for all of those efforts and creating a great plan. And so we've been talking. That's the team sort of trying to figure this out. But there will be a budgetary ask in the spring of completing this project or moving it along. And then how do we split that? And that's going to be our, our conversation. So.
Bill, for the herb cottage, 30 is just rotten wood and painting. What's the other 70 is roof and stuff?
I don't remember it all, but there's definitely a detailed document that goes through it all. There's, there's this like, stuff in the basement that's like, it's like a scary basement down there. And there's some cistern down there that's from 100 years ago. Like, there's things that need to be addressed on all levels, but we're looking at bare bones. We really wanted to figure out, like, we don't want to put a greenhouse next to it, then that building goes down. You know, we wanted to make sure that at least the bones are good and then we can move forward. And then that was, the herb cottage was built to serve the four original greenhouses. So we just, we're continuing with the tradition and, you know, use that exactly how it was built in the first place. That made sense to us. Upcoming, the ADA ramp for the ed building, which has, was in last year's budget. The herb cottage maintenance that I talked about, the education building bathrooms that I talked about. Lot of words. This is all written in your memo and things, so I don't need to go through this. But our new greenhouse will look something like that picture on the left. Altechs is the company. It's to house this native seed propagation program. If you want a lot of details, I just presented to the Conservation Commission and I only talked about this. So on the 11/13 recording, if, like, or come by and I'd be very happy to walk through all this and take an hour and really dive into the details. But with our land management plan, we want this greenhouse to house native seeds. We want to harvest them from property. We've been working with Bill McDonald with the Firefly Sanctuary. We want to work, we want this to be sort of the public greenhouse. We already talked to the garden club. They're very excited to participate with their work at Irwin, which mirrors very much what we're doing at the Nature Center. And this be a home for harvesting native seeds, propagating them, and in the spring, sending them out into New Canaan. And we just think that's a great idea. And it fits exactly with our land management plan. So we feel like this is like the last piece of that. Also, the Beautification League with their triangles and things, we've talked to them. We haven't finalized any agreements, but if you read in the memo, we're shooting for a 2027 growing season as our first, because we still have to get approvals for all this. We have, you know, Tiger has been great in helping us along with this, but we need a, the health director to weigh in because of all the lead and what we can and can't do there. We fired Keith Simpson to do the construction documents. So once that's done and we get all the approvals, that's when we'll order it, not before. And then it's six months to 12 months lead time. And in the, and in between there, we can put the slab down and we can get it ready. And then when it arrives, it takes like no time. And like, it comes in the pieces, they just pop it up. So we got a year and a half sorted to iron out the how and that's all going to work. We're probably going to hire our part-time horticulturist, or at least a greenhouse manager, something like that to help everyone and make sure it's a successful program. And we'll be doing that over the next year and a half. And we're, we're paying for this, which is always the, the good news, at least from the, the town asks is $100,000 grant, which was fantastic. And we have the, the rest of the funds to complete it. We're thinking a 350 to 400, but that also depends on whether we have to cart off materials during the process for lead or whether we can bury them on site. Those are the questions we're working through now. Like I said, there's a lot more on the Conservation Commission recording, and I think the best way to see it is to come over. So I, I always invite that. I can't repeat myself enough. It's always worthwhile. So happy to have you anytime. Any questions on the greenhouse project? Oh, this is more, oops, sorry. This is more our land management practices. What I highlight here is that we don't use chemicals. We've, we've chosen not to do that. So we're kind of a case study on non-chemical invasive removal. So the solarization, which is the plastic, those little black baggies, those are, instead of, sometimes when you cut an invasive plant, you dab it with the herbicide and it just stays in those roots. That's an alternative. You just encapsulate it down. It can't sprout up. We've done cardboard planting. We've tried the goats. You know, we're a, we're just trying every method we can, seeing what works. And we work with a regional partner in Larry Weiner Associates out of Philadelphia. So that's how we go beyond our borders is, you know, we're doing all this so that a major company can then share that knowledge. And hopefully we're making an impact beyond just these 40 acres, which is exciting to us being an education center. It'll look, that picture on the left is pretty much what it looks like. The mountains in the back would be nice, but we don't have those. The, those building, that, that's the herb cottage there. And so that, that, that tall grass to the left, that's exactly where we want to put it. So imagine that greenhouse shoved next to that building and that's the new site. All the other outside will be, when the plants are big enough, they can go outside. We're thinking about doing a patio up there of some kind, just to have a nice gathering space. And again, we haven't fully outlined every bit, but Keith Simpson also is very excited because his brain's moving now and he's, he's got a bunch of ideas of what to do with the whole area. So that's where we are. The education building, this is shoring up our, our biggest moneymakers and mission, I mean, preschool and summer camper. Their high mission, they're our most important programs. That's what moves our needle. And so the education building renovations really are about shoring up those, those programs for the foreseeable future. This is the picture of that main floor. On the left is where our Little Explorers is, on the right where those partitions are. We want full walls. We want to redo the flooring. We want to redo the lighting. We want to, we have to redo the sprinklers if we do that. And the bathrooms proposed, you see where those partitions are on the right picture? Right behind those, by those windows would be the row of bathrooms. And that would serve the entire floor. And that's what we're, that's what we're looking at. But we have basically 12 weeks in the summer to try to do that, which is not a lot of time, but that's what we're working with Rose and Carl and Bill Ossman and Tiger of how do we even go about this? And yeah. So that will, from my understanding, there's not a price tag yet for that. And that is being prepared. And I think March was the, about when I was told that that will be ready. So for the budget season, you'll have more details on what that cost us.
Well, you may have to expand enrollment as a result of that project.
Well, we can expand enrollment. We also have, it allows two extra classrooms if this whole plan goes through. And it allows a lot more flexibility too with us. Like we can, sometimes we need more twos, sometimes more threes and just, it rotates. And so, yes, we can, we have, we'll have the ability to increase.
Bill, you trying to get this done next summer? Ideally 26?
No. The plan is, is that possibly this, in the upcoming, we can do a lot of prep work. Like they can do all the plumbing from the floor below and get that ready for the 2027 would be the big summer project to complete it all.
If, if, if you're looking for 2026, the info we would start needing in January for us to see it. Just, not March. I was just in terms of your timing.
I would certainly pass that along. I.
Because then it would come through us first, regardless of Board of Finance or Town Council.
So I think there'll probably be a staged ask then, sort of the, all the prep work to be done. And then the following year would be the, the completion of it. But I think you'd need the all-in because you wouldn't want to start it this year. And then next year be like, oh yeah, we're, we want to see this through to fruition. But yeah. The last, this is the 1982 greenhouse, a lot of greenhouses. We came here a couple of years ago, last year, and Deanna, this was always stuck out. You said, why would we spend a million, a million and a half to renovate a greenhouse? Why don't we just do a new greenhouse? So thank you for the idea. And that's why we want to move it up top, which is, it was, it's a lot cheaper, at least for the greenhouse portion. So then we did a strategic plan to figure out what are our other needs with shoring up the school on the education building. So then we did a strategic plan to figure out what are our other needs with shoring up the school on the education building side. That would put the school all over there and all our classrooms and then the visitor's center and our. Uh, new building we want to build where the greenhouse, this built greenhouse is, that'd be sort of the. Event and fundraiser and multi-use space. So that's where we're, we're proposing. I have a couple of pictures. I need to preface that this was our first go with an architect. We have not formed our capital campaign committee yet. We have not done a feasibility study. So we're very early in the process, but this is where we are today in our thinking. And. The idea is a, a, a large open space and that's really what our, our, all of our programs, when we did our strategic plan of. Every program that we have can use something like this and it would greatly enhance. Uh, our organization. So on the bottom, you have mechanicals and bathrooms and things. That's all on the parking lot side. We want the glass and everything to be open to the nature side, block the parking lot. And these are a few renditions of sort of what we're thinking. So nice, big open spot. We have plans to partition that if we go with this building so that if we have field trips, that's a big thing we don't have right now because the preschools kept getting bigger. We reduce the space for when field trips come, which we do a lot of, and where to put them. So we're putting them in the sugar shack, our Sturgis room, which is our only meeting room. It just limits what we're able to do. And so this would greatly help those programs. There's a view from the other side. We told them maybe not the deer antlers. And the next rendition, not really nature center, but that's the idea. But I mean, from corporate or meetings like this, we would love to have the ability to do that. And that's sort of the, the outside and the visitor's center next to it. Is this the size of the patios we want? We don't know. This is our, this is our first, our first go of it, but generally a big. Uh, open space that we can do a lot with and that's our first go. So we don't really have an ask yet. We will be asking town to participate or inviting you to participate. And what we really want to keep it on is what are the maintenance issues with our current building? What, what, what costs? We, we always try to keep the town asked with what's the town responsibility? And then beyond that, nature center would. Be doing a capital campaign to fund this.
And I guess on, on that building, I mean, I, what I would be thinking is, you know, uh, nice versus need or how it's mission focused. But you know, you'll come back to us with that because. You know, we have a lot of event spaces during town, but I'm sure you guys will have a strategic view of why it makes sense.
So I, I, I just happen to have, and this is just in the last two weeks. So these are the groups in town that have used our Sturgis room. Which the Sturgis room is, I don't know this for fact, but I think most people, the library is beautiful and they've got their space. I think people go there. And they're booked really consistently and then they ask around and we're one of those spots. So in the last two weeks. We've had the newcomer, newcomers club, the national charity league, the YMCA, the New Canaan Community Foundation. Several troops of Boy Scouts who also did the rain gutter regatta there, uh, the after prom committee, the young philanthropists who did their meeting there. The Young Life of New Canaan, which has started and they're doing their once a month there, uh, the beautification league and New Canaan Hawk. So that's just like. In two weeks, those groups have been there. And we're, you know, that, that's our kind of one meeting space. At least if we did all this, snapped our fingers, money wasn't an issue. This would greatly help and we want this to be a, you know, community use center. The, I never, I don't know what happened to the call. Someone called and asked if they could do the, from the rec department's like, oh, could we maybe use the, do the dot? Daddy daughter dance, which was a, a program, the rec department. That's the type of thing that we're thinking at. We want people to come and use this and, and just like our greenhouse, we, we're a community space. So. That's our initial plan. We will be back certainly next year to give an update and where we are on it. But, you know, we're, we're moving forward with something like this. Uh, again, if there's other conversations to have, let's, let's have them. That's why we invited Tiger to be a part of the building committee. To keep us like, hey, is this reasonable? Hey, or are we, like, he's not making decisions, not speaking for anybody, but. Just to, we, we want to move this along as smoothly as possible. So that's where we are. Questions for me?
Love, love the off-cycle update. It's great. Yeah.
If you'll.
Yeah, no.
Thanks all.
Always love seeing you, Bill. All right. Great. So powerhouse theater.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. So I'm here today with Patricia Spigani from the Town Players of New Canaan. I'm here with Scott Crossfield from Theater Projects. You haven't had a chance to meet before. And Scott's also a resident of New Canaan. And then you know, Rose Long Rothbart also. So I wanted to bring the design team because this is an update on our project or design for the powerhouse. Project as well as an update of where we are on the, the funding and to make sure we. Confirm the request to the town to help us with the, the project financially. So those are the, the two things we wanted to cover. And somewhere, I should be able to share this. So, all right, it looks like I'm not going to be successful sharing, so we're just going to work off the paper. Apologies to the folks on Zoom. So where I wanted to start was to say that our project scope, although we've been at this for several years, our project scope has not changed. So our intention is to expand the lobby and then also to add. What we originally called the Black Box Theater, but morphed into really supporting our mission to establish a theater arts education center for the community. So what has changed is we, in the process of working with our design team. Looked at ways that we could optimize the design of use of the buildings. So both for efficiency, for their intended use, and also to minimize the construction costs. So with all of that, what has changed since I think maybe formally we were here is that we were originally going to make. The office into, or the potting shed into our office. We've now moved that back onto the, the property proper of the, the powerhouse itself. So it'll be contiguous with the education center and that will give back to the town, the potting shed to use for the public restrooms on the, the campus. So.
Which is where we started initially.
Where we started.
And it was like, well, wait, it's cheaper if we move it here to make Black Box. And when they were doing the bathrooms, it's, it's evolved again.
Right. And, and I'll give Scott and Rose credit for that because they looked at those.
Yeah, or we take the blame.
Right. He said, why are you doing that? Why, why are you get, why are you doing that? So. So that's where we are. And then from a, a funding perspective, we had. Determined three million dollars as our budget for the overall project. We are. Within shouting distance of that total. So somewhere between a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollar gap. To that total, assuming that the town continues the funding of the one point five million. So that's the, the summary of where we're at. So then if we look at the, I wanted to shift to the design that we have on the, the next page. So this is a rendering. I don't have quite the pretty pictures yet that the nature center does, but we're working on those. We're, we're working on finalizing the dot design will be. And I should let Rose and maybe Scott talk to this concept, but the overall idea is that we'll have a, a really nice integrated. Space between the. Education center, the new lobby and the existing theater. But I will give Rose or Scott the opportunity to talk about the design for just a minute.
You can hear me. Okay. Well, basically our approach to all of this is to look at this as a campus within the Waveney Park. And to, as she says, have all the buildings work together. We are kind of having, I guess, basically two functions within. The, um, the campus there and then the potting shed so that all of these relate. So our three objectives are to serve the client's needs. To come up with a plan, a design that benefits Waveney and the New Canaan community. And to do something that is in keeping with the buildings that are there so that we don't introduce something that's not appropriate to Waveney Park. And the overriding of all of that is to keep it in budget so that we can actually accomplish this goal. And which is. Which is going to be a really a great asset to the community with the addition to the theater lobby and this education center. It's going to, and then to connect it all with the courtyard area and. A view overlooking the pond.
And, um, so first of all, it's really nice to be here this morning. It's really nice to meet you all. So just very quickly. I'm Scott Crossfield. I'm one of the partners and I'm director of design for Theater Projects. So we are a global performing arts design firm. Uh, offices in Connecticut and New York, London, Paris, Shanghai and Denver. So global reach, we do world-class performing arts centers, opera houses, concert halls, Broadway, West End of London. Right now I'm working. I live in town. Yeah. I'm working at Lincoln Center on the recreation of Damros Park, right? First new build at Lincoln Center. So they just called me. Yes, it was very sweet. But yeah, no, I'm lucky enough to live here and, and. Designed globally. So, and, uh, so I got the call a couple of years ago, maybe a year and a half ago to come think about arts education in Waveney Park. And art, art education is dear to my heart. So about half of my projects, I've done about seven hundred performing arts centers. Worldwide in my career, about thirty year career, coming out thirty years, half of them have been in education. And the future of the arts is art education. And what's critically important for any center of any size is to have what we often think of as the second space. Right? Whether it's the education room, the rehearsal room, the classroom. That space where kids can go and to learn the skills that arts education teaches. That helps them in their future life, whether they pursue the arts or not. So it's very similar to team sports. You learn confidence. You learn how to work together as a group. You learn how to speak publicly. You learn how, you know, how to memorize. And how to show up, right? And present yourself as an adult. And so it's critically important that we have spaces like this in communities for students. So we showed up on campus and if you know the building, the existing powerhouse and there's the storage building. Right? And that's why you've seen some plan changes because the first thing we wanted to do is we wanted to make arts education front and center. Right? And so you have these two equal, equal supportive pieces on the campus. That will really create a truly amazing space for the students. The other thing was, one of the first times I came, the kids were outside in the weather, getting sprinkled on rehearsing because they didn't have anywhere to go. Right? So that's just, just the practicalities needed to be fixed, but there's this really exciting thing to think about the theater. Its current stage, that building is the same size. So you can translate work from one to the other. You can work separately. You can incorporate them. So it's this critical missing link at the moment. At the powerhouse to truly create a campus that really will be wonderful for kids. So I think we've done a lot to simplify the plans. To really focus on budget, to make it a very achievable project. But I think it's one that is, when we talk about the future of the powerhouse, this is that missing link and that critical component. So.
Okay. Thank you both. And I think we realized early on that we needed, although we're really good at designing. Temporary sets on the stage, that we needed to make sure that we were designing this campus. For its intended use and optimized, that we weren't, we, we needed to bring in the professionals. So we're really happy to have. Scott and Rose and Carl and Keith Simpson for the, the courtyard and the site work as our design team.
Yeah. And Patricia, well, you've been talking with us about this for years, right? And I, I would say from my perspective that the. Goal of the campus and the goal of the program, I think it expanded. Initially, we were really just talking about. Expanding the lobby, et cetera. The educational additional add-on piece did come later, right? For you guys, because initially we were just talking about, we need more lobby space and we need to kind of get the bathrooms in place. And then as you got into this programmatically. You thought more about expanding it to an educational.
Right. Because we're, it was on close heels of each other because we said, we really should be looking at ways to. If we're going to do this and we're going to make a change now in the campus and the town is going to make other changes to the campus. There was this literally eyesore that would have been left, which is our storage annex, which is an eyesore. So we said, hmm, this is not the best use of the space. And again, I'll, I look at Scott here and said. Why, why are you, why are you using this space, this prime real estate for storage? So a key piece of the plan to solve the storage is to put a basement underneath the annex, the, the education center. So that we have climate-controlled and accessible storage, but it's not going to be at ground level.
Not that sliding glass or the sliding door area where all the set stuff is.
Exactly.
Office, I was looking, where are the office spaces? For, for a while, then the office was going to go to the potting shed and so.
So if you actually, it would be easiest to look, if you flip forward.
If you go in your inbox, you can blow it up.
You flip to either the color picture, but flip to the one, the next page. So where it's orange, the orange section on the right here. Yes, that is where it's going to be flexible use space, but that's where we'll have an office. And, and again, if you imagine that there are kids programs going on, you don't want the office to be across the courtyard. You want it to be where somebody can be there, see what's going on. You know, if we, when we. Fulfill this mission and have the building built, then we're probably going to be looking at hiring. Instructors or an executive director who would lead the programs. So they need to be right there on site with what's going on.
And you'll be putting in, you'll, you'll be digging in a basement for other storage.
The idea is that we'd have a basement, which would be accessible through the existing basement.
And that doesn't, that doesn't trigger a need for an elevator, does it?
I'm not in this one because it's just storage. Yes, not the, not some question.
So there'll be. It's also accessible out the back. Basement is, yeah.
And through steps in the, the office. So the right side of that picture, you'll see stairs going down. And so that would be also accessible through that. Okay.
Just to be clear, where is the, the basement would be underneath the building portion? It's not underneath the patio portion.
It's not underneath the patio. So today, today, there's a basement, there is a basement under the existing office, which is where the, the bathrooms will, are, will be. And we would extend the. Into the green and the orange. At least the part of the green and part of the orange.
And it makes so much more sense than having the public bathrooms there, you know, flipping those two around just makes a world of sense. I mean, I, I never really loved the idea of having the.
Connected bathrooms. Bathroom space, so we'll say, I mean, because you have the, those are the, the blue, the first set of blues behind the lobby. Those are the existing ones. Is that correct?
That's right. Well, they would be still, it'll be renovated to be totally ADA accessible.
They're not like the existing.
But then right next door, I mean, on the adjacent wall, you have another set of bathrooms. And you can't just do, you can't just do one set of bathrooms?
One, there's a capacity question, the number of fixtures for the number of people. So if we have events in both. Sections at the same time, there could be fifty people or forty people in the. The annex or the education center, listening to a lecture, listening to a concert, watching kids do something, a rehearsal. And then there's the, the main theater with a hundred fifteen seats. So if it's fully utilized space, we actually need those number of fixtures.
And you'll be able to access, like if you have a sold out show and bathroom at intermission where back up, there's a door, it looks like to get.
Absolutely. So it'll be totally open. You know, we'll be able to open the space or contain it, either way.
So is it just, because I'm, I'm understanding what Amy's asking because typically your productions are mostly evenings. And I, you do have some Sunday afternoon shows though, so I know that most of them are Sunday afternoon. So it would be those Sunday afternoon. Because I, most of your education will be daytime, I would imagine, not evening.
Depends if there's adults, we could be doing an improv workshop on the weekend. Sometimes we could be doing, like. In January, we're going to host in our current theater, we're going to host the one acts that the high school kids are doing. So, and that'll be an evening show, but it'll give us a lot more flexibility in what we can do versus what we're doing now.
The, the hope would be both, right? Where it's humming all the time, constantly being utilized.
But there's no way, and I'm sure you guys looked at this, but.
I grew up with a family of 10 kids and a bath and a half. So, you know. But, but there's no way in terms of even if you like made one bathroom with more fixtures, because it's the ADA that takes a lot of the square footage. It's not more than to put one slightly larger, you know, bathroom. That services it all. I'm just, it just looks like, I'm looking at the whole space you have and it's like, that's a lot of blue for bathrooms, you know? I mean, it's almost like you added up some, you know, almost. I'm sure you guys have looked at, but I just have to ask it because they're back to back bathrooms, you know, like right on a wall.
It's the nature of the existing construction, which is why there's two bags of them versus if it were new build, then we'd build just one exactly as you're saying. So this is basically, it's the least expensive version. We're just using the building.
There's a stone wall between them. Two and a half foot stone wall.
The Waveney sized walls. Okay. All right. Just have to ask, sorry.
How many, how many images of bathrooms do you have?
And it, again, it also allows it, there to be two functions going on at the same time.
Sure. I, but I just said, Diane was, Diane was saying there probably wouldn't happen tons of times anyways.
Yeah, it's, it's, and also just getting into it is, is a whole thing.
If we didn't need them, believe me, we could put the space to other use, but this is what the requirements say. And this whole project started because we needed the theater to have ADA accessible restroom. So.
So what's the, yeah, the vestibule lounge, which is the pink, that's like extending the lobby. But then we have a, a blue vestibule outside the bathrooms as well. Is that connected?
Yes.
That, that area, if you have an event going on in the lobby, you don't really want to walk, have the door to the toilet. Like right there, you kind of want, yeah, a little screening for privacy, but also for noise. So that's the purpose of that space. There's also.
Bigger than what there is right now.
Yeah, yeah. It just makes it a nicer, yeah, transition space.
And then on, just a question, we were talking about walls before, I noticed on this, the early drawing. This, this drawing here, it looks like there's a, the way this is broken out to the courtyard. This is almost like a wall here. Is that intended like that to close that up or would you see that?
There's a change in the level. So we have to have a ramp going down from the parking area down to the courtyard area. So you have to have a bit of a retaining wall. This, as you'll notice, it says October.
Yeah.
It, it looks quite different right now. So we're still working on all the visuals and how all this comes together.
Because I love the, the way this works out with the courtyard and the way the building flows. I mean, for event space outdoor, you know, get a picture on a nice evening, how beautiful that would all be. I was just wondering if there's going to be access out that way or whether that'll be closed off.
No, there, there will be a round. And then what this also doesn't show, as you can see in the floor plan, the big pink area. Is a terrace out the backside. So they're overlooking the pond. So there's access to that as well.
Great.
But then, and what maybe isn't obvious, the idea is that as you're coming onto the campus from the main part of the parking lot. There'll be basically glass doors, so wall of glass and glass on the backside so that you could theoretically see through. And if it were, it's a nice day, evening, early evening, that could all be open.
And the ADA accessible this would be somewhere.
Yes. Right now, there actually aren't any ADA parking spots in that part of the parking lot. There's one way over by the carriage barn. So that's part of what we'll get. Work Tiger's doing in the parking lot. So we're pretty excited about the design and where we've landed. I think it's an improvement overall. So now we're working out the fine details of storage and how high the, the lighting rack's going to go. And, and what color the curtains need to be and what the floor surface is going to be like in there. It'll be a nice space.
It'll be a beautiful space. Exciting.
It seems like you're doing a lot in that amount of money. Is it, I mean, how comfy are you on with the?
So. We worked out the schedule, which we'll get to, that says, so I'll answer that question in a few ways. We looked at the total square footage of what we're talking about. We multiplied it by $1,200 a square foot, which is pretty pricey, but. That's the number we, you know, said would be appropriate to look at. And we're about 3 million, 3 million, 3.1 is where that number came out at. So that's one way we looked at it. The other thing, we looked at the schedule and we said, by early February. We should have enough of the design documents done so that we can actually hire a professional estimator. So that'll be on our expense for town players, but that'll be something that we'll do that'll help us. And then I love Scott's analogy that says, this is our goal. Do you take the building, you turn it upside down and you shake it? That everything that doesn't fall down is what will, we're chart, what we're, our goal is to put in place. So if we need to get fancier chairs later, because we have a basement full of chairs of somebody. When, I forget where we got them from, that we can use short term. We have tables we can use short term. But if there's things that we can add later, the curtains, you know, the other, more lighting equipment, then we can add that later. But we at least can get the building up and functional and then we can.
So you can almost, you can pre-wire for high-end lighting and all that stuff. You don't necessarily have to put it all in.
Exactly. As long as you have the infrastructure and then usually a base amount of equipment so that you can start day one. Right? But you can purchase it all later and oftentimes it's advantageous. All right, we're going to purchase everything at the last minute anyhow to get the latest technology. But also we don't want to buy it through a contractor because then they'll have a markup. So we'll do a lot of owner purchase at the same time or in the future.
And, and within this, the, the potting shed gets repurposed, gets made into the public bathrooms. That's within this budget.
Not within this budget.
It's not within this budget.
Not within this budget. Right.
But that's on, that's on us anyway. I mean, we, we've been saying we need public bathrooms.
So, but I think, I think it's important, I think it's, yeah, I think there's two things. I have a question, but I think it's important to remember. So, and I wasn't part of the original one and a half.
Right.
So I don't, you know, I don't know what the one and a half included. But it has been communicated with Patricia pretty specifically over the last budget cycle and a half. That, you know, we, we know what they've spent to date and they have, as you see in this budget summary. They have 875,000 left from the town of New Canaan. For this project, whatever they decide beyond that is, is theirs. But I do have a question in that one and a half that you have 875 left. There is a site, it says does not include site work and that's a pretty expansive term. So, uh, I'm, I, I understand it doesn't include the, the restrooms and the parking, but the site work is confusing to me. I, I would have expected the site work to be on you as part of the overall budget.
So for example, in the courtyard, so if you think of the, where the potting shed is. And you think of where our current bathrooms are. There's plumbing water in and water out that has to go and electricity that has to go from. House building over to the potting shed. In order to put the town bathrooms.
So we chose not to put, I mean, this is just a conversation.
Yes.
We have that, like, I don't know what this bathroom conversation, it keeps getting moved. Tiger, why don't you come up?
But Tiger, I, I'm just, I'm really confused with the numbers and this has evolved many times and, which is okay. Sometimes you take time with projects and you get to the better place.
We get smarter along the way.
I mean?
We get smarter along.
Yeah, yeah. Or you just think of it differently. But I, I gotta go back and look at some of the earlier presentations. Because this all got precipitated by looking at the potting shed. And I, Tiger, I thought we had like one and a quarter or so, some number for the bathrooms. And then we said, no, 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 it's cheaper if we put them in there and then, but. Did, we put money aside for those bathrooms and I don't know where that money is. Because it all ended up getting involved in the designs because at one point we weren't going to do the public bathrooms freestanding. We were going to have them attached at the far end. And then I, I just, in terms of what we, I, I, I just don't recall, but. I do remember that we had a pretty big number initially for the bathrooms and you said, well, it might be cheaper if we did it this way and then get them in the building. So the money for the bathrooms, do we have it somewhere segregated? And, and do you remember how much it was? So that's set.
That was set.
Okay. Because we were going to like merge it into them and they were going to use part of it. So that's set. So that is above and beyond the ADA allocation for the bathrooms. And the prior budget, 250K and ARPA money, 250K. So that's above that.
Because remember there were three 250s?
Right.
So that was, that, that was one, that was the, the last 250 was the potting shed or the public.
Freestanding potting shed bathroom.
Right. So what you have is 500 is the two of the 250s and this is the third 250.
Yeah, but I just want to make sure we, we know, and I'm not sure, I know we approved it a while ago. And so I guess it's just hanging out there as an approval that at some point we'll say, well, bond for, you know? So just in terms of the town, if we go forward on this, okay, we're going to end up spending. You know, that these commitments as Patricia laid out, but we also realized there's another through 50, we've committed to redo those bathrooms if it costs that much, right?
That's correct. There was an additional 250. I forgot exactly the funding source. Can't remember if it was ARPA or if it was town.
I can't remember either.
This, this has her prior commitment is ARPA, one of the 250s as ARPA for her commitment. And then, and then budget for 250 of a prior budget allocation.
Right. I think that the, I think that the third 250 being the potting shed was also ARPA funds.
We have to spend it by a certain amount of time.
Were able to.
We put it back into the, we put everything back into.
Okay. All right. Good. I just want to make sure that people realize that.
I just can't remember, but I think that that's exactly what it was because it's been a while. But the, I think it was two 250s from ARPA, one 250 from the town.
Right.
The two 250s to Diana's point got swept back in. So we didn't lose it because we knew we were going to be beyond the, the timeframe.
All right. But, but just in terms of, we'll have to put into our capital budget or bonding, you know, there's, it's not just this commitment. It's also the other 250 that we.
So I have a question and that is follows that on. So the 250 that we have for the bathrooms. Will the site work necessary for those bathrooms be covered by the 250?
So we, I, I have monies in the, in the, in the current ask in the 27 budget for the patio. Which is what I consider to be the site work. So the patio in between the. In between the town hall, in between tunnel, in between the, the powerhouse itself and the potting shed, that entire patio area. Forget what color it was, gray, I think it was. I have monies put into my budget this year for.
In the, in the upcoming budget?
The upcoming 27.
So it isn't. So that 250 that we allocated is not going to be enough.
I don't think so. No. It was never anticipated. We, we, we anticipated that at some point in time, we were going to have to redo this. Entire patio area. So, so I put it into.
How much did you put in the budget for that?
No.
So we're really talking for those bathrooms, 350.
Well, it, well, the, yes, but the patio, the patio needs to be redone regardless of whether we do the potting shed or not. The patio is, is in disrepair. So.
But I mean, it sounds like you have, you have like lot, like. Electricity and water lines that are part of, that have to be part of that patio. So how much of that is, if you were just to do the patio and didn't need to connect the bathrooms?
A hundred thousand dollars in there for the patio itself. That's what I had in there for it.
I remember when you presented that, that we were going to do the bathrooms there to begin with. The 250 was for the bathrooms, but we also talked about the curving and the drainage issues and the water flowing into that site. I mean, we had that conversation and that was going to be mitigated somehow. And that was all part of like a hardscape, separate number. Which, you know.
Right. And while we were working out the, basically working out the topography throughout the area to try to make the, the, everything accessible. So, and then where the ramping was going to be, because there has to be ramping from the parking lot down. There's got to be some work in and around the potting shed in order to make it all, make it all accessible. So we've been working through that and the, the issue was what, where was the, where was the bathroom going to be at certain times, right? So now the bathroom is coming back to the potting shed. Which, which was the original proposal. So there will be, I have monies also for parking lot work, but the parking lot needs to be redone regardless. So I have that separate and that's in this year's budget as well. So, because there would be some scalloping that needs to be done in and around. Now that we know the potting shed is going to be the bathrooms and we know that the annex and the, the, the annex area is going to be now the, the additional theater space. We know where the access points are. We know how that's going to work. Now we know exactly how the, the, the parking lot is going to be laid out. Is in, in the budget for the parking lot work also, but that parking lot needed to be redone.
And you'll have to, you'll have to place the handicap spaces in the correct spots.
Exactly. That's, that's right. And we were working through that. So now the, the handicap spaces originally were farther down on the eastern side, almost all the way to the end. Because that's where the bathrooms were when we, when we changed. Now they're moving their way back up the parking lot, getting closer to the bathrooms themselves. Then with ramping that will then allow it to satisfy the, the powerhouse theater itself. So it'll be the. So that's the, uh, that's, that's been the overall issue all along. And the fact that the parking lot, whenever they did it, they filled the parking lot, which then causes the problem with the potting shed originally. Because it's causing the potting shed that, that's the reason why we're having all the water infiltration is because they filled it, I don't know, two, three or more feet in that area. Which then really hurt the potting shed itself. So, and that was done years ago. Sorry.
People have to, it's going to cost a lot more than.
Well, so, and I think to your point earlier, Amy too, about we even have, I mean, you talk about ARPA money and how long we've been talking about this. I mean, it's amazing how long we've talked about this, but and then on the positive side. The results of what we're looking at today versus where we started, I mean, it's really, I think, a much nicer, more complete project than it was before.
I mean, the project originally was expanding the lobby and fixing the bathrooms.
Right.
Right. And then, and then you guys took a bigger philosophical discussion of what the powerhouse does and with it. And, and the big, let's be clear, a big add is the education center. They added like a million bucks. So it's a different, it's a different thing. I'm not saying it's bad. I'm just saying it's different. Yeah.
But you, you know, when you look at the overall plan though, when you include the back terrace, the front terrace, the way this is all going to work out with the public bathrooms. And looking at this from 30,000 feet, this is so much better than where we started now. And granted, it took a while to get here, but the good news is we're here now. So.
And, and, you know, I think we all should step back and say, we've capped out what the town's going to pay for this. Like there's, like, that's it. Like it's on, on, you know, the powerhouse to, to raise the money and sell it to the community. So, you know.
And we're working that for sure.
Exactly. So.
Sure. I think, you know, we've made good progress this year. We're about to launch our capital, uh, public campaign. And I'm very confident that we'll reach the goal. So. And our goal at wherever we need to be, we will break ground next summer. So. I think once we do that, we'll get, you know, people say, oh, this is really going to happen. So if folks were, you know, waiting to see, I think that will also help our fundraising. And Scott and his technical buddy offered to come do the first couple of classes.
Happy, happy to.
So I, I just need to point out that all the folks that are going to be in our next play on the back page. So this is what it's about. You know, we're talking about a building and sewers and bathrooms. But it's about the people that are going to come and, you know, perform and. Just bring the families together. I, I know this show will sell out. We've got 20 kids on stage and 15 of them are from New Canaan. So we're really thrilled about that. We've got a, a father and daughter acting on together. So it's, you know, that's what it's about. The, the building's nice, but it's really about the community that we're building. So we're very excited about that.
I mean, you do great work over there. And remember when my daughter was in NCL, I was like, our favorite thing to do was volunteer to, you know. Be ushers.
Yeah. And we're still doing that. That relationship is, is good. And there's so much heritage. And we're just proud to be the current stewards of that heritage and building for the future. And, you know, it's an 80-year-old organization in town, which is great. So it's one of the things I think that really differentiates this nonprofit.
Agreement, which I love.
Page agreement. Well, and the, the last one-page agreement we get to tear up for the potting shed. So that'll be a town council conversation, but we're just really pleased to be part of this and making this work for the, the next generation, the community. So, and we, we literally like having arts in the park, you know, because we've got the carriage barn next door for visual arts. And then we'll be at the center for performing arts and we're, we're good.
We're giving Westport a run for their money.
Richfield, yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for sitting here so much.
So, so my, my ask to you, formal ask is that the 875 be brought into this year's budget. From the five-year strategic plan into the budget as part of the town's commitment to the one. to the 1.5 million.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Very nice to meet you. All right.
Yep.
Okay, so the next thing on our agenda is the contracts. So you have on your tablets, the contracts under $10,000. If you have any questions, let me know.
All good.
Okay. And then if you go on to the legal bills. So we are going to have, just, just as an FYI, because of the, because of the charter revision commission, there was, there's additional legal money that needs to be allocated and some of it's going to be spent in this fiscal year. So I've asked Ann going forward, any legal money that we expend to be specifically designated, like a sub, a subtitle of where we are with the town funds and then a running total charter revision commission, because that's unbudgeted legal money.
Yeah, and I see it right here.
Yep. Okay. Any questions? If not, if I could get a motion to approve the legal fees. It's unanimous. Selectmen's comments. So we've had, you know, kind of a rough November. We've lost some really big luminaries in this community and I wanted to take a second to acknowledge the, the passing of Jim Lisher last Tuesday, Wednesday. You know, Jim was, you know, a successful, you know, business person, but past his, post his business career, he served as chairman of the Town Health and Human Services Commission for 10 years, and he also served as chair of the Aging Commission. He also chaired several studies for the Board of Selectmen on senior health and housing needs, which resulted in the New Canaan Optimal Living Community Plan. And as part of that plan, he helped create I-Step Telehealth Program. And this program was recognized as a Connecticut Livable Community Best Practice. And Jim was recognized with the Silver Source Fairfield County Innovation Award. In parallel to the telehealth program, Jim also served on a multi-state team securing funding for a Connecticut low income seniors health program called TIPS. So he was just an amazing contributor, so active and involved. Literally, he had just resigned his commission on the Health and Human Service Commission a, a month ago. So it's a big loss for the community and our thoughts and prayers go out to Eleanor and their entire family as they mourn his passing.
Not just our community, the state, the amount of work he did for seniors and also he's very involved in a group, Community Resource Partners, which helps formerly incarcerated people get back into society, which, you know, you really need a lot of support there. What, what a great guy.
He's just one of those guys that he, he did so much for the community, but he did so much more that you didn't know about, just quietly.
So humble.
Yeah.
So humble.
And if you ask me, I would have said, no, he's like 77, 78, out playing tennis every day, good guy, very, very active. And, you know, to, to find out he was 87 was a shock to me because he was one of the youngest 87 year olds that I could ever think about. I mean, what a, what an amazing human being. So.
And on top of that, you know, Sven's England lost his right, his wife, Rita, Rita, about a week ago as well. And she was also very involved in the community. It's, it's been a tough run.
Very, very difficult time.
Okay. With that, if I could get a motion to enter into an executive session as follows pursuant to Connecticut General Statutes 1-206D for discussion of the lease of real estate by the town when publicly public, when publicly regarding such lease would adversely impact the price of such lease.
So moved.
Second.
It's unanimous. And I will invite Tucker in. All right. So we are back in open session and if I could get a motion to adjourn.
Second.
And before I finalize that, we all just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and enjoy family and friends and gratitude.
Amen.
And with that, I, it's unanimous. Your turn.
Thank you.